Good evening. Welcome to the October 18th meeting of the Ojai City Council. Could we have the roll call, please? And Robin is in the back, just so you all know. Roll call, please, Robin.
That. Councilmember Wirick?
Here.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Here.
Mayor Sticks?
Here.
Councilmember Blatts?
Here.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Councilmember Blatts, will you please say the pledge? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. And approval of the agenda? Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Robin? Or we can just say all in favor?
We're all here.
I'd like to move item one up to item one.
Thank you very much. Done. All right. And just welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. And just so you know, with the order of events, we're going to have the staff report. Then we'll open the public hearing. We'll get developers' reps' comments. The ad hoc committee, councilmembers Wirick and Blatts, will then make a comment. We'll pause for council questions. Then we will take all the other public speakers. There'll be a brief rebuttal comments by the developers' reps. And then they will close the public hearing and move on to council deliberation. So we'll begin with a staff report. James?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The staff report will include comments from myself, our community development director, Lucas Seibert, and our city attorney, Matt Summers. I'm going to start with an introduction. And I think over the next several minutes, we're going to hear a lot of detail and a lot of, you know, 15-plus years of history on this project. So I'm going to start with just some introductory comments that are maybe a little bit more big picture. And I'm going to start with the introduction about the background of the project and how it came before the city council and the potential challenges on this project due to the history and somewhat complicated history of this project. As our first slide shows, there is quite a history on this project. The city initially issued permits for the cottages among the flowers to be redeveloped 15 years ago in November of 2007. So the first bullet point on this slide, again, shows that 15 years ago, permits were issued for this project. The final tract map was then approved in December of 2009. And design permits were extended in 2011 and 2016. In April 2019, the fifth bullet point on this slide, the planning commission approved an additional extension. If that extension had not been appealed by the city council, the extension would have been granted and would have taken effect, and the developers could have redeveloped the cottages.
James, real quick, there's a car driving by. But if anybody needs to know, the cards are going up here tonight. We've seen a few people who are coming in a little late. Just so you know, the cards are going up here in the corner. But go ahead and repeat that because there's a truck driving by.
Sure. So in April of 2019, the planning commission approved an additional extension. And if that extension had not been appealed by the city council, it would have taken effect, and the developers would have been able to redevelop the cottages without the city being able to require any affordable units. However, the city council did appeal that decision in 2019, solely as an effort to protect the affordable housing units at the cottages. The city had adopted requirements in its city code to replace and protect affordable housing units by requiring replacement of affordable housing units with affordable housing units in 2013. Thankfully, the council realized that the requirement was not being met before the extension was approved in 2019. I explain this background because I want to make sure everybody understands that this, the history of this project, and that this project was not a project that was started with a goal of developing those sites. It was, again, granted permits in 2007 that could have been acted on at any point subsequent to 2007. And again, when the application for the time extension in 2019 came up, the city council had two choices. Either to let the project move forward without affordable units or to work with the developer to try to figure out a way to replace the affordable units. Again, in 2019, the difficult decision was made not to simply grant the extension, but instead to work with the developer to try to meet the replacement requirement for affordable units. Because of the complicated history on this project, there are no easy answers, unfortunately. When the city initiated the negotiation process, the city argued that 33 units across cottages and Mallory were rented at affordable rental limits, and therefore 33 units would need to be replaced with deed-restricted affordable units. However, even that has been in dispute. It is not clear. It's something that potentially could be litigated. Because the developer argued that the city couldn't apply these requirements after the original permits were issued, after the series of extensions were issued, and that none of the units were deed-restricted previously and therefore didn't count as needing replacement. So there are a lot of arguments, a lot of gray area. There's a lot of things. We've talked about the legal risk and the possibility of a legal challenge. There's a lot of things that would potentially and could potentially be litigated. And/or we could work together to try to find a solution. So these factors and many others resulted in over two years of negotiation, which is reflected on this slide, the timeline of the development agreement process, starting in May of 2019, with a dozen or so meetings over 2019 to 2021 to develop the development agreement, a January 2022 public city council review of the deal, and then the July 12, 2022, most recent review of the project, where the city council directed the ad hoc committee and staff to continue to work to try to improve the deal. And so the result of this extended process over the last 15 years is a proposal that would replace 27 affordable units, all of the undisputed units and two of the disputed units, and result in 40% of the proposed units at these four sites being deed-restricted affordable for 55 years. The deed restriction, a lot of people, I don't, it seems like, aren't understanding how important a deed restriction is. If a unit is affordable but does not have a deed restriction, it's not, there's no guarantee that it will continue to be affordable. The deed restriction guarantees it for 55 years. And so essentially, if approved, these deed-restricted units would be affordable until 2077. So again, the important thing to note there is that without an agreement at this time, there is some risk. The city has no power to keep these units affordable in the absence of an agreement. And the city attorney will provide some more information on that and other possible outcomes during his part of the presentation. So I'm going to turn this over. The next staff person to speak is going to walk through the project in a little more detail. Again, I was trying to stay high level with the timeline here. But before I hand it over to our community development director, I do want to just remind everybody that one of the roles of staff is to provide facts. And so I know there's a lot of thoughts and opinions, but we are trying to provide the facts about the potential risks to the city, the potential loss of affordable units, and what could result as part of the agreement or what would result in the absence of an agreement. And then it will be up to the city council to make that difficult decision based on those facts. Again, unfortunately, because the project was approved in 2007 and received several time extensions, there are risks involved, which we'll go over. And we're going to explain those as part of our presentation tonight. With that, Lucas will walk through the sites, units, and affordability in the development agreement.
Next slide, please. Well, good evening. My name is Lucas Seibert, community development director here with the city of Ojai. The project, as it relates to the development agreement, includes four sites. You can see up on the top is Mallory Way and cottages hugged up against each other. World University is kind of centralized, and you have, which is 107 North Ventura. And the Montgomery site is kind of towards the bottom right-hand corner. Next slide, please. So the development agreement proposal includes cottages amongst the flowers, Mallory Way, World University, Montgomery Site, four sites. We talked about that, and certainly it was discussed at the July 12 meeting. Cottages is including 12 units in total. Two of those now are affordable at a low and very low affordable rate. And then it still is being proposed as a 10-year rental covenant for that site. Mallory Way is 30 units in total. Seven of those units are affordable. Six are at moderate, one is at low. World University includes 10 total units that would be converted to an existing building, on an existing building. Three would be affordable, two at moderate, one at low. And then Montgomery Site is proposed at 15 units in total. All 15 of those would be affordable, 12 at moderate, three at low. The Montgomery Site is actually a vacant site, so that would actually be ground-up construction.
Let me ask a question. Lucas, I'm going to ask a question that I don't understand to this day, and a lot of people that I've spoken to don't understand it. Oh.
Is your mic on?
I'm going to ask a question that many people don't understand. And it was also what you just stated with the first, on the first item, cottages among the flowers. The newspaper also stated that there's no very low, by whatever, however the state defines it, but the fact, in real life, the people are paying very low rent, the only very low rent in Ojai that I'm aware of.
You're talking about boots on the street in terms of what's going on currently versus what's being proposed with the development agreement?
What's current, yes. Currently, the cottages are very low. Am I correct?
There are tenants currently who are paying a rental rate that is very low income, yes. But there's no legal requirement for that developer to continue to allow them to pay that low rent. The development agreement is proposed would require that those units, two at cottages and the others at the other sites, be at that lower rental rate, whether very low, low, or moderate, for 55 years. So it exists now, but it doesn't have to continue to exist. That's the difference.
And the city has no power to ensure it exists right now.
And the reason the city doesn't have the power, or doesn't think it has the power, is because it doesn't think that our municipal code applies to this situation.
No. The city's position is that the municipal code applies to the project, like all projects. But no code requirement when cottages was built and Mallory were built required affordable units.
In 2007?
Correct.
Okay.
And, but before that, nothing, yeah, nothing when they were built, not, the 07 was approval, not when they were built.
Right.
When they were built 100 years ago, 50 years ago, nothing required them to be affordable. The 07 approval at that time required some affordable at Montgomery and none at cottages. The city's position is that the proposed extension of the permits, the rehab, will require affordable. And that's what's done through the development agreement. But that's the difference between forcing affordable as a result of the redevelopment and forcing affordable without redevelopment. The city's position is that we can only require affordable units that's restricted, deed-restricted, if they're redeveloped. If they're not redeveloped, if the developer simply does nothing, then there's no affordability requirement. That's the heart of it.
So it sounds like our municipal code doesn't apply.
It applies only if they redevelop. If they do not redevelop, then it doesn't apply.
That's really, really, that's really, but you know, it says our municipal code. My interpretation is that our municipal code requires that if a developer demolishes or remodels affordable housing, housing that low-income residents can afford, and replaces it with housing that is not as affordable, that he has to replace it with an equal number or equally affordable units.
Yes, that applies, and the proposed deal implements that code section.
Between, but not on the site, not on the site.
All four sites. That's what the proposal does. That's the catch. The ad hoc committee's negotiated proposal provides for complying with that requirement across all four sites, not just at one.
And the reason it's not, the developer didn't agree to apply it just to the two sites, the cottages and the Mallory Way bungalows. Is that right?
Correct. And I'll let the developers' reps speak to their motivations. But as we understand it, based on our prior discussions, the developers' request, as negotiated through the council, is across all four sites in order to make the economics work, that the additional units at the other sites create the revenue to pay for the subsidy at, for the affordable units. Spreading it across four sites enables the subsidy to work. They wouldn't be able, per their statements, to afford to rehab an affordable-only project. And I'll let you, I'll let them speak to that further.
Yeah, I'd let them speak to that point.
Okay. But one more question. Was, so this idea of bundling the four properties came from members of the ad hoc committee?
As I understand it, it was a joint decision that was created between the ad hoc committee and the development team. And I'll let the ad hoc committee members speak to that further in their comments.
Thank you. That's good. I just want to be really clear on that, on those points. Thank you.
I think, real quick, before you start, again, this is where, this is why we started with the long history at the beginning. In 2007, permits were granted with no affordable requirements. So we get to the point where the city kind of, in 2007, gave away that ability to some extent.
Yeah.
And then the city council challenged that and tried to negotiate a compromise.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
All right.
Don't worry. Go more. I'll be quiet.
Okay, continuing. And then the last bullet is Strengthen Residential Relocation Plan. So really what it speaks to as part of the development agreement, there is also Revised Strengthened Residential Relocation and Assistant Plan. This plan would put into place those residents which are living in cottages and Mallory Way to be first in line. I think that's an important phrase to remember. I think you'll hear it throughout tonight. For new or renovated units as they become available within this development agreement, this proposed development agreement. The phasing plan would require two units closest to Aliso Street for the cottages to be renovated first, and then the low and very low units above the garage central to the cottages site to be built concurrent, as well as the conversion of the World University site, which is the 10 units, and the Montgomery site, which is 15 units. That would be the first phase. And then this would provide options for those residents within cottages and Mallory to be first in line, again, to relocate to one of those sites. The second phase would be Mallory Way and the remaining eight cottage residential units. Next slide, please. So what does affordable housing really mean in California? Well, housing levels themselves have a range. The range within this proposed development agreement include moderate, low, and very low. And then they have income tied to them, and then through that income is an equation that then spits out a rent. What's being shown here is an example of one person with an income of $96,950. That rent equates to $2424, $2,424. For low, $70,250 for that annual income, and that's up to. Now that equates to a rent of $1,616. And then new to this proposal is the very low, the one unit that we have as a part of this development agreement, with income at $43,900 for one person, and then that rent equating to $878. Now, the state defines affordable housing, which is really borrowed from HUD, housing in which a household spends no more than 30% of its gross monthly income for, A, rent and utilities, or B, mortgage, loan, principal, and interest, property taxes, insurance, utility, and homeowners association dues, if any, if they apply. Next slide, please.
Let me just note a couple of points there, too. So one thing that I know we got a lot of questions about this week was, what, is this a ceiling or a floor, essentially, the income limits? And the income limits are the maximum. And so somebody making under that amount would still, could still qualify. So for example, somebody making $36,000 could still qualify for very low. It's up to $43,900. Somebody making $60,000 could qualify as low income to qualify for the low units. And somebody making $89,000 could qualify for the moderate. And so we're going to get into more detail right now, showing, this is for a one-person household, for example. We're going to show a couple of different numbers, but this is a ceiling, not a floor. And so I know a lot of people say, well, you know, who makes $100,000? Well, you can make less than that and be eligible for the housing in these situations. And then just a reminder, because I know we always hear, you know, there's always a question of, is this really affordable? Well, what the city has to act upon is the state's definition. And we are required through our housing element to plan for a certain number of units that meet these state definitions. So that is the term as we use it. And it's, you know, open to people's opinions of whether they believe that's really affordable. But it is a ceiling, so it does allow for people who make less than that.
Mayor? I just had a short inquiry by text saying the sound on Channel 10 is not intelligible. I just thought I'd mention that to James.
Okay. So James Hahn is listening. We'll ask him to make sure the sound on Channel 10 is working correctly.
Before we go on to the next slide, well, this is fine. Keep it up.
Need more sound back here, too.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'll speak closer to the mic. I think what's important also to note is through our housing element, before I speak to these numbers, through our housing element, you know, each city is required to do and perform a housing element every eight years. If they miss that eight-year mark, it's every four years. This city's been lucky enough to do it and to comply with state regulations and do it every eight years. But I can't say that's true for every city. And I would say at some point, when we were sliding in from the fourth cycle to the fifth cycle, we're currently in the sixth cycle, a lot of cities weren't compliant. HCD's come down a lot harder with those regulations in ensuring that housing elements are up to date with current state standards. And certainly, HCD, which is Housing and Community Development, which is basically the right arm of the state governor's office, is coming down hard on cities. Huntington Beach is a perfect example of that. That's happened over the last four years, where they weren't compliant, and now they're required to be compliant. So with that, I want to identify, again, within that sweet spot of what this development agreement includes. It's your moderate, your low, and your very low incomes. And here, we're showing a range in between one and four individuals within a specific household. The range goes all the way up to eight. Here, we're showing really kind of what that sweet spot would be for what's anticipated for this type of a project, given the size of the units, et cetera, et cetera. So here, I'd already shown the one individual, but there's also two, three, and four. And those range from 43 to 62 in terms of very low, $62,000 a year as a four-person household. And then the rent limits then are identified, meaning that a developer cannot charge more than what's identified here. Period. That's going to be a part of the, that would be a part of not only the development agreement that's identified as proposed here tonight, but that would also be a part of the affordable housing agreement as well. And then the moderate, sliding down the scale of moderate, it's in between $96,950 up to $138,500. And that's four individuals, once again. Again, it's a sliding scale, cannot exceed that number.
Lucas, just to confirm, there's another category, acutely low income, that's not on this chart?
There's acutely and extremely low, correct. Within this, and then there's above moderate. There's other, there's other sliding scales as well. We're focusing on only the pieces and parts that apply to this development agreement as proposed.
Does that really match the Area Housing Authority figures?
Microphone, please.
Can we just bring it through the chair?
Sorry. It doesn't, I keep looking, and I have the Area Housing Authority figures, and they don't seem to match, but maybe that we can look at that another time.
Well, I'm not sure what figures you're looking at, but this is, this is taken directly from the state and from HCD's. They come out with a report every year, and it comes out in between April and May of every year, and it's for every single county.
And the rules, the income limits do vary by county.
Correct.
These, this table is the Ventura County limit set by the state. I would suggest at the break, we're happy to take a look at the numbers you're citing for AHA.
Yeah, let's pass it down.
And that'll become a public record as well.
It's April of this year, April 18 of this year, Ventura County.
Ryan, you have a question?
Yeah, can you go back one slide real quick? Because that's got moderate for one person at $2424, and then you go to the next slide, and I think it's $2900. So I want to make sure that's clarified, because that's, can't be right, unless I missed something. If you go to the next slide, and it's got $2909 as moderate for one person?
Okay. Yeah, I'll clarify that. Okay, so moving to the next slide.
I will note, so, yes, these are correct and they match, except this includes extremely low and, or it includes extremely low and median, which we do not show on this chart.
Yeah, some of them match.
The low income and the...
In other words, the county list you have from AHA is every category. The list on the slide is only the categories that are in the development agreement.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I asked because someone asked me about that. Yeah, she's probably in the audience.
Next slide, thank you. Can you hear me in the courtyard? Okay. So overview of the development agreement. The affordable and market rate, we're looking at a total of 67 new and renovated units. That was also discussed by the city manager earlier to Ojai's housing stock in favor of the housing element. 27 affordable units in total, 20 moderate, six in the low category, and then one in the very low category. This also includes deed-restricted affordable units, or those affordable housing units for 55 years, which includes an affordable housing agreement, as I had mentioned earlier. In addition to that is a trail built and maintained by the owner developer. And that would be an easement in favor of the city for walking hiking trail throughout both the Mallory Way site and cottages among the flowers. Again, built and maintained by the owner developer of this development agreement as proposed. Additionally, there's water recharge that's identified within the development agreement for both Mallory Way and cottages. And that would be a potential alternative to concrete channelizing of the project. That's already been identified through the engineering plans. We would be looking at alternatives to that through an engineering report that's been identified as a part of the development agreement as well. And then a phased development relocation plan for better protection to the existing residents. Those are residents for both the Mallory Way site as well as the cottages site. So it's two affordable units, as I had mentioned before, and the two vacant units at cottages. Those two vacant units are closest to Aliso Street. And then after that, you would have World University, Montgomery Site, Mallory Way, and then the remaining six units at cottages built within a two-phase, as opposed to a four-phase approach. Next slide.
Let me ask a question. Does that mean that, on the previous slide, that all of World University, all those units will be fixed? What is...
Yeah, World University isn't a ground-up construction. It is renovation and conversion, right? So yes, that would be, the developer can certainly speak to where they're at in that phase, but I think they're very close to submitting, depending on the outcome, only if approved.
All right, thank you.
I want to focus on the residential relocation assistance plan. The relocation assistance to displaced persons for each existing tenant, that's, like I said before, cottage, cottages among the flowers, and Mallory Way bungalows. It's the first in line. Those residents that are currently here at Mallory Way and cottages are first in line. They get first pick of those projects or those units that come online, before anybody else has any sort of chance to see any of these units, whether they're renovated or new construction, as they become available. In addition to that, there's moving costs of up to two thousand dollars within the project area. Additionally, relocating to units within the project, in addition to tenants' verified level of affordability for one year, again, moving costs up to two thousand dollars are included within that as well. And then, third is, for the first twelve months of current rent, would be offered if no unit is available within the project. Again, plus the moving costs of up to two thousand, up to two thousand dollars. So really, what you're looking at here for the last one is if there are no units available within that qualified, verified level of affordability, and the tenant no longer wants to reside within Ojai, there is that option, that third option, where they can have moving costs up to two thousand dollars addressed, as well as the first twelve months of the current rent, if no unit is available within the project.
Mayor, may I ask, so, but what if the tenant wants to stay in Ojai?
If the tenant wants to stay in Ojai, then they have those two first options. First in line, and then the relocation to a unit within the project. And not only locating within the, a unit within the project, but it's also tenant-verified affordability. So, it would be, I can tell you want to jump in, but this is me.
Finish your point.
Okay. It would be basically through income statements, identifying that they're within those, those income levels. Like, like we were mentioning before, moderate, low versus very low.
And two points I wanted to add. If, for whatever reason, a tenant can't find a unit that works for them in the project, and they have been offered one and haven't taken it, then the development agreement calls for that one year of cash rental assistance. There's no unit in the project available for them, plus the two thousand dollars in moving costs, which they can then use in any rent, whether in Ojai or anywhere else. And the two thousand dollars moving assistance for all tenants that are being relocated is anywhere they want to relocate to. So, if somebody wants to move to be with family in Oakview, for example, they would get the two thousand assistance. It's not only within the project.
Yes, I understand that. But the concern that the tenants have expressed to me is that if there's no unit available in the project, that there is no unit, the twelve-month rent will only last maybe at most four months if they want to still live in the city, in the current conditions. If you're paying one-thousand, six-hundred and fifty now, and you, and the only rental you can find is four thousand, how long will that money last? That's, that's one of the concerns that have been repeatedly expressed to me.
No, I certainly understand that concern, and the developer will speak to that further.
Okay.
But I think the key there is the expectation, not necessarily guarantees, but expectation is that the phasing plan should mean that all tenants who are being forced to relocate will be able to move into a unit. That, the intention is to structure the phasing plan so that every tenant who's being required to move as a part of the development project has a, has a unit to go to within the project.
And so, so, are the residents going to receive some kind of a legal document that spells this out, signed by all parties?
Yes. The development agreement includes an exhibit, I believe Exhibit D, that is the relocation plan, and they'll be provided copies of that if approved and if signed, approved by the council and signed by the developer. They'll be provided copies of that, for sure. And the developer, I think, can speak a little more to the details of the plan.
And I just, I just want to note, so, that is one of the things that was renegotiated over the thirty-day period that council asked us to go back and improve some things. And one of the things that I think we heard and the ad hoc committee heard was that one of the needs was to better protect the existing residents. So, we went back and negotiated what we think is an even more protective, better relocation assistance program, but also renegotiated the phasing, which is maybe kind of tough to explain, but we essentially worked with the developer to say, if you did it in this order, could more people stay in their current developments, or will they then have an opportunity to move to another location in Ojai where they're still getting that affordable rental unit? So, so that is part of what was negotiated over the last thirty days. So, James Hahn, the speakers in the back are out, if you can get those going.
Can I just add on to something here as well? Can you hear me? Okay. We went from a four-phase proposed development agreement to two phases. That first phase is covering two units within cottages that aren't occupied currently. So, you're renovating those first two. In addition to that, as a part of this proposal, there are the two units above the garage. That's our two affordable units. So, that's four units right there. In addition to that, so then, there's no other units that are being touched for cottages with that first phase.
Yeah, yeah.
Then you've got Montgomery, and you've got World University going before Mallory Way, and the other, and the remaining eight units for cottages. So, you really have more than a head start. You're really kind of setting it, setting the stage. You understand what I'm saying?
I follow, yeah.
Okay. Setting the stage for the, for the existing tenants.
Can we ask, or do, maybe the developer will probably explain, that it's not like they're working on one thing at a time. They could be simultaneously working on those two cottages in front and World University, right?
Right, and I would, I think it's up, certainly you wouldn't want to ask them in terms of how they want to structure that phasing.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
All right. So, moving on to SEQA, or California Environmental Qual, can you hear me better? Good. So, the DA exempts and relies on previous studies and environmental documents. That includes the MND, or the mitigated negative declaration, for cottages. Cottages includes twelve mitigation measures. Those include mitigation measures for air quality, biological resources, which are trees, cultural resources, which is historic, and then water quality, obviously. The final EIR that was prepared for and certified in two thousand and twelve, mind you, the MND for cottages was in two thousand and seven, includes fifteen mitigation measures covering cultural resources, which again, is, is historic as well, and biological resources. It really focused in on those two pieces. No overriding considerations, but mitigation that brought it to a threshold of less than significant. The bio report that was prepared and with conditions for the Montgomery Site includes conditions of approval to address cultural resources, as well as historic pieces, or not historic pieces, it's a vacant site, as well as trees, essentially. There are, there are several trees that are on-site, and those trees, some of those are actually oaks that would be potentially removed as a part of the project. Additionally, the DA, the development agreement as a part of the SEQA exemptions includes four different exemptions. The common sense, which is fifteen zero six one B three, the existing facilities, fifteen three oh one, new construction and conversion, which is fifteen three oh three, and then infill, which is fifteen three thirty-two. Next slide, please. Other items to consider and that are of concern, certainly we heard quite a bit during the July twelfth city council meeting, and historic trees and water, I think, were the three that were certainly discussed quite a bit. Obviously, the affordable housing was discussed, but I think the three of these are important pieces. And for, starting off with historic resources, the historic resources report that was prepared for cottages in two thousand and seven was approved by the Historic Preservation Commission in two thousand and seven, and then city council later that year in two thousand and seven. It includes two mitigation measures, one in which is the archival of photos and building, and buildings of the physical conditions, and those go to the Ojai Museum. Those photos have already been taken, and we've already received them, and would be provided in the Ojai Museum in due time. The second is, any historic features damaged shall be repaired rather than replaced. And that was a condition that was added by the city council in two thousand and seven. And, and the interesting thing about that is, I've never seen a condition quite like this before. It's pretty robust in terms of ensuring that the resources, as, as they exist, are retained either from the exterior standpoint or from the interior standpoint. There's no distinction between the two. And it also requires an architectural historian to be commissioned and on-site to address when those situations arise. For Mallory Way, there's also a historic resources, resources report that was prepared by Sandpoint of, Point of Ventura Research. It was approved by Historic Preservation Commission in two thousand and twelve, and then city council later that year. Again, it includes really two point, I think, two historic resource mitigation measures that are worth mentioning. Again, the archival of quality photos of the building's physical conditions that goes to the city as well as the Ojai Museum. The second is to offer the buildings for offsite reuse and advertised in the paper for a minimum of seven days, and then removed within thirty days. And then, the applicant has the option to go for additional time. I've seen this done in other communities when you're looking at, when you're faced with reviewing and finding mitigation measures that come out of a historic resources report. A lot of the times, thirty days isn't enough time, especially if you have individuals that are interested in relocating these buildings. That's when the negotiation begins, and typically, that takes, in between thirty and ninety days. I've, I've seen ninety days, I've seen six months. Typically, you're trying to work with a group or a company to come in, load them up, and then move them out. A lot of times, roofs have to come off for those relocations. And then, we have the tree permit. So, tree permits for both cottages and Mallory Way, both done by poly associates. Cottages was approved in two thousand and seven by, recommended by, by planning commission, and then approved by city council. That includes forty-seven trees on-site, thirty-seven would be retained. As I had mentioned in the July twelfth meeting, ten of those trees will be removed. However, in doing further research through my department, we found that two of those have already been removed, and were removed in two thousand and ten because of the house, meaning they were dead. That leaves one tree and poor house that would be evaluated. Nineteen new trees would be planted as a part of the requirements and conditions. That's already within the conditions of approval. The tree report that was prepared for Mallory Way was approved, recommended for approval by planning commission in two thousand and twelve, and then later that year, approved by city council. That includes eighty-eight trees on-site, seventy-four would be retained, fourteen trees would be removed, four are large eucalyptus trees. And then, the replacement ratio and the conditions of approval require a four-to-one ratio replacement. And then, lastly, the water usage, that is really considered by Casitas Municipal Water District. The applicant's required to provide technical engineering reports to address retention of water on-site. That was something I had mentioned earlier in my presentation. That could be attained through rain gardens and other physical site reconfiguration measures, essentially. And with that, I'll turn this over to the city attorney, Matthew Summers.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of further points. And first, I'll note, we have copies of the AHA stuff to pass out. Those are the same income limits as were stated on the chart. Thank you, Susan. As noted, the chart was just a subset, but the numbers do match. So, with that, I'm going to cover a couple of points. First off, as staff noted, what we're looking at is a development agreement for sixty-seven units, of which twenty-seven will be affordable, deed-restricted for fifty-five years, twenty moderate, six low, one very low. A little bit on deed restriction. When a unit is deed restricted, it means that the landlord is prevented from raising those rents above that affordability level at the different levels that Lucas noted. And that commits the applicant and future owners. So, it's not just this developer. If he sells, and sells to the next one, and the next one, fifty-five years of protection for those units at those stated levels. And none of that exists now on the current site. What, the second piece about it is, as proposed, ten of the additional units, ten of the remaining forty, would be restricted to rental only for ten years. And so, they would be rental at a market rate, but it would be rental only, which should help with supply to an extent. The next piece to note is development agreement. I've heard questions from council members and, and some others, sort of, is it standard to do a development agreement for a project of, for housing? And is it standard, or weird, or odd, to do a development agreement for a quote, "small" project? You know, the oft-used phrase is, development agreements are common for a new Amazon warehouse facility, or a new large-scale development. And while that is true, those are common, they're also common at a small scale. Ojai has a history of development agreements, if we go back. The last one was another Becker project, a Jeff Becker project in downtown, the three, the three spaces next to Bonnie Lou's. That was done via a development agreement because it solved a complex land use challenge. The city owned a strip of land in the middle, the old brick walkway. The developer owned the two strips on the other, either side, neither of which is useful by themselves. So, a deal was done via a development agreement to shift the city's land in a swap. Move the walkway to the edge, put the sites together, and allow productive use of it while requiring, in that, in that case, requiring the brick walkway to be removed and replaced and restored, and the green wall to be installed and maintained by the developer. So, I just cite that as an example. Question?
Has there been a development agreement in Ojai that has several different pieces of property, like this current one? I mean, the one you just mentioned is just one piece of property, really.
Three parcels, one location. We haven't had one with four sites, to my knowledge, now.
Three different sites?
That one had three parcels, all next to each other, though.
Yeah, next to each other.
Has there been one with, say, three separate sites, or two separate sites?
I believe we've had a couple with two separate sites.
But nothing with...
But not three or four.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
But I will note, it's not uncommon in other communities. And a development, a development agreement is typically used to solve zoning challenges, where you have a complex site history, a complex and disputed set of facts, and a long history. It can be solved in a single deal that creates certainty. All parties know exactly what they're getting because it's laid out in the deal, and it avoids litigation risk on all sides, and, or reduces, if not avoids. And it ensures that the developer, and the city, and the community, all know what they're going to get, with certainty out of it. That's why development agreements are typically done. The policy question embedded in that is whether the deal is right. That's the choice for the elected council, not myself. On, let's see, there's a question there, and then I'll turn to the next point.
Okay, two, two questions about the number of years. Why fifty-five years? Why not fifty? Why not sixty?
Fifty-five years is the state's requirement for a density bonus project, and the seven units at Montgomery are density bonus. So, we just piggybacked on that to make it fifty-five for all units.
And we don't know where they came up with that figure, right?
Say again?
We don't know why they came up with that figure.
The state did it because it used to be thirty years.
Uh-huh.
And thirty years was seen not to be enough. As thirty, projects came up, you have sites where there's still people who have, who, still communities that need affordable housing. Thirty years hits. They come out of affordability, and then tenants are left in a difficult spot.
Fifty-five years is the minimum.
It's the minimum.
It's the minimum.
It's the state standard. The council could require more if the developer were to agree to it.
Council could require more. Not that we're all, any of us are going to be alive, but it's, it's, it's a thought. Okay. All right, now, what happens in ten years?
So, in ten years, two things will have happened. One, the cottages units have to have been kept as rentals for ten years. And I should note that ten-year requirement, and that's ten of the cottages units... And I should note that 10-year requirement, and that's 10 of the cottages' units, not the two affordable. That requirement starts from when they're rehabbed. So if it takes six months, a year to do the rehab, that year counts not against the city. The 10 years of rent protection starts from the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
So then 10 years for the rent protected. And that means that they're rentals only, but at market rate, to be clear, but rentals. The second thing that happens 10 years after approval is the developer will have completed the project. And if they don't, then the entitlements will die. In other words, the developer has 10 years that this is approved by the council to do all of this work. If they don't, at the end of those 10 years, then the entitlements will expire unless the future council at that time chooses to extend it.
But I still have the same question. Say, he completes all the projects.
Yeah.
In 10 years, what happens to the people living? Is there a change in 10 years? Can they be sold? Can, what happens?
Ah, so it varies slightly by the four sites. At the end of that 10-year period, the 10 units, the 10 market rate units, the cottages, could be sold. They have to be rented for 10 years. After that, they could be sold. 10 years doesn't mean anything for Mallory or World or Montgomery. The 10-year rule only applies to cottages and only to the 10 market rate units. They have to be rented for 10 years. At 10 years, they can be sold separately.
So in 10 years, we could lose what we think we gained?
No, because the 55-year deed restriction, all of the affordable units remains in place for another 45 years, past those 10 years.
Okay, so whoever buys it has to abide by the same, if, say, if something's sold?
The 10, there's two different metrics here, so let me back it up a bit. At 10 years, this is the world will be in, if everything is built. The 10 units that are market rated cottages will be able to be sold separately.
Yes.
They'll be able to be sold, the buyer can do with them as they will, following state eviction law. No rent restrictions in terms of the amount of rent. The other 27 units will still have...
Wait, wait, maybe, am I the only one that doesn't understand this?
It varies by unit.
Because if, say, there's someone living in the cottage...
Yes.
It's sold.
Yes.
And what is the protection at that point? I hear there's 50...
Let me try to give an example.
Okay.
The cottages, it's not the same for the whole cottages. That's the key. They're not, the cottages is not all going to be the same. There's going to be two situations with cottages. 10 units and two units. So let's take them in turn.
Okay.
The first one is the 10 units. The 10 market rate units, which means there's no restriction on how much they're rented for, someone who's living in those units at that time will be paying market rate rent. And when that's, when the 10 years clicks off, the developer can choose to sell it or not. If the developer sells it, they'll still have their lease for at least a year, or whatever lease length they have, and then they'll, they could be removed. They could be evicted at that 10-year period. But they'll be paying market rent. The other two units of cottages will be 55-year deed restricted. They'll have 45 more years of protection. They have to be rented and only at low and very low unit, very low levels. So cottages isn't all one thing, 10 and 2.
Okay, got it, got it, yeah.
As to the rest of the project, the other three sites...
Yes, I got it.
The remaining 27 units affordable will be restricted for 45 more years at varying income levels. And the other 30 units will be market rate units at will. Does that split it out?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm beginning to grasp the whole picture because, obviously, Elisa Street is a much more desirable place to live than South Montgomery. So we're putting the...
Some might disagree with that statement, but I'll...
Okay, okay, so maybe that's not a fair statement. But there has to be some reason why, okay, I'll wait until the developers are here. I'll be quiet now, thank you.
And when I talked about the long history of this project and the fact that the city had already given permits and that impacts us is one of the challenges that we need to realize is a challenge, is that those units could be sold right now without a deal. And so for people to, I understand it's like, well, can the city protect them more? Maybe, but there's also a possibility there's no protection if we don't have a deal, so. So that is important to keep in mind, I think, the idea that, is this the absolute best deal, or is this a better deal than the worst-case scenario or the likely scenario at this point?
Thank you.
It's, Suze, if I may, just, it's also important to remember that, at this moment, anyone can have their rent raised, and anyone can be evicted, and they don't have to put anybody back in those units at all if they don't want to. And that's a completely option, it's just an option for them, other than the timeline of the leases that they have, that they have no requirements at all to keep anybody there. And that's a, that's a real, that was one of the real fears that we have, is that there's also this other opportunity where they could evict everyone, leave them out for a while, they may lose some money, but then they can change what they're renting them for to market rate. They can do that without any litigation. They don't have to win a lawsuit, they don't have to file a lawsuit, they can just do that. So I just want to make sure that that, all of this is with the backdrop of what could potentially happen, not just what we want to see happen.
And none of us sitting here are affordable housing experts, so I have to take your word for it.
Correct, but as the city's lawyer, let me explain a little bit further, and that's a great segue. So if we look on the chart on the screen, and I'll cover it, today, right now, there are zero affordable units at cottages that have to be kept affordable. The developer has the absolute right to raise the rent tomorrow to a certain amount. State law sets a certain limit, but in time, he can make it market rate. And the leases exist, and the developer will have to follow eviction law to evict anybody. But if he follows eviction law and he follows state codes regarding evictions, he could empty the buildings, empty the units, and then re-rent them at market rate. That's where we are today.
Just for the cottages, right?
Cottages and Mallory as well.
Nope, not Mallory, that's not true.
This isn't a public debate.
We need control, this is out of order.
My discussion, the commentary regarding, skip that. The point regarding the today situation is this. Under current law, under today's reality, without any development, without any rehab, without any modification, there are zero affordable units that have to be kept affordable. State law sets a limit on the increase of the rent, sure, but it still can be done to market rate in time, and they can be evicted at will in compliance with eviction law. There are no current protections at cottages or Mallory for any of the units that exist today on the ground. If the developer chooses to rehab those units under current law and the city wins the litigation regarding that issue, that's the left column in the slide, there would still be zero affordable units because the developer would choose not to rehab the units. He has already made it clear that he can't afford to do so if he has to rehab just cottages and Mallory. So the likely outcome will be the left slide, the left column, zero affordable units, current tenants can be evicted in compliance with state law, of course. City will have paid its attorney's fees, no added tenant protections. The commentary from the public is raising the situation, if the city wins the lawsuit regarding the replacement requirement and the developer chooses to then build that project, then yes, 25 to 27 exact unit count, unsure, will be replaced affordable units. However, the city can't force the developer to build that. That could be approved, but the developer still faces the choice, build it or not. They've made it plain that they can't afford to build it, and they won't. Now, I'll let the developer speak to their intentions, but that's based on the prior commentary. That's why the left slide is both today and the default. If the city wins the lawsuit, meaning that the denial of the permit extensions for cottages and Mallory is affirmed, then the situation will be zero affordable units on the ground, zero affordable units by deed restriction. The next situation, and this is stated to show three outcomes. It's up to the council, the community, and the developer in varying choices and courts, what outcome we end up with. But I wanted to lay out the outcomes. So, left outcome is, just to summarize briefly, then I'll take questions. So, left outcome, today, and if we win the lawsuit, which we would hope we would win, and we're confident we will win if we have to, would be 35 market rate units. The 33 existing, if the developer chooses to rehab, they have an existing airspace right for two more units at cottages if they sell them separately. They could potentially build up to nine more at Montgomery with only four affordable. Zero affordable units if they don't exercise that option. Current tenants can be evicted, city pays its attorney's fees, and no added tenant protections, no relocation. The next possible outcome would be if the city loses the lawsuit. So this would be if we do not do the development agreement, as it's not right for Ojai. The city, the developer forces a hearing on cottages and Mallory, and the council denies the extension, and then the developer sues, and then we lose the lawsuit. That's the second column, the middle column. If that was to happen, the world would be 40 units, 33 market rate, seven affordable, six moderate, one low, no very low, no extremely low, no acutely low. And the city will be out somewhere between 200, you know, $500 and $750,000 in attorney's fees combined, and there will be no tenant protections. The third option is the development agreement, as proposed and negotiated by the ad hoc committee and previously reviewed by the council and community. And as we've discussed that at length, 67 units, 30 market rate, 10 market rate rental for 10 years, 27 affordable, with the tenant relocation program, including the moving costs, first-in-line provision, relocation assistance plan, and a phasing plan that forces the developer to build affordable units before relocating tenants. And a couple of final points, I won't take questions. As noted, the heart of this is for the council to determine, and the community through the council, whether this deal is better or worse than these other outcomes. Is it, and whether it's better or worse to secure a certainty of 27 affordable units and 30 market rate and 10 rentals, or whether it's better to go with the lawsuit and go with the outcome there, the likely lawsuit from the developer, which could result one way or another in zero affordable units. That choice is for the council to assess its risk tolerance, its expected outcome one way or the other, and whether the desire is to secure certainty or to secure significant risk of expensive litigation. I also, last point, will note, as we've seen letters from a number of members of the public, including a couple of lawyers, if the development agreement is approved, we have threats of litigation to challenge that too. So there may be litigation there. If the development agreement is approved and lawsuits are filed, the developer, not the city's general fund, pays the defense of that, per the indemnity under the ordinance and the development agreement, as the council is previously aware. So with that, it's a policy choice for the council, given the risks, the realities, the options, and the outcomes. And the question fundamentally is, is this an appropriate deal to accomplish those goals given that certainty? Or is it right to seek a better deal and renegotiate, or to take another option? And that, with that, I'm sure there's questions on that. Thank you.
Yeah.
So just to confirm, the Mallory Way bungalows are protected by the Tenant Protection Act?
The Mallory Way bungalows are protected by state law, the Tenant Protection Act, they have to follow certain state law regarding evictions, but that doesn't force, as to Mallory, that's only going to force if the developer rehabs it individually under the current permits, seven units to be affordable.
But currently, that...
And that's true only if the developer rehabs it individually.
Okay.
Now, what does that mean, Matt? So everybody can be clear, since we had an outburst about this, what would the Tenant Protection Act actually do for these tenants who are there? Would it prevent them from being evicted? Or would it provide them one month's worth of rent if they're not individually separately deeded, and if they qualify for being over there for a year, and the other things that are required on the Tenant Protection Act?
The practical answer is the latter, plus maybe six months of litigation if they get counsel. So it's six months of litigation, living rent-free, and then still evicted. The outcome in the end is always eviction, if a developer chooses to evict someone. Rarely can it be prevented.
And isn't the only relocation plan they're entitled to one month of their current rent if they've been living there over a year and if the property qualifies? And that's assuming that there are specific delineated reasons a landlord has to have to evict them, but those include rehabilitating the properties, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And they have to get all the permits now, right? It's been strengthened.
They have to show an intent to want to rehabilitate the properties in order to check the box on the notice of eviction.
Yeah.
And then if the tenant qualifies for being there over a year, then they're entitled to one month's rent. So I do unlawful detainer work. I represent a lot of tenants' rights. And in this particular situation, it's clear that that is, yes, that is absolutely true, they would be protected by it. But can you tell me that that's going to keep them from being evicted? No. And can you say that the relocation program isn't substantially improved over that? It absolutely is, and we were well aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay.
So with that, we recommend taking comments from the, I think next we're going to look at the developers' representatives.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks and council members. Do you have our PowerPoint presentation?
We're working on that.
James, can you pull up the PowerPoint?
The Tenant Protection Act, what a failure. It doesn't sound very good.
Okay, there you go. Was it play? Can you hear me now? Thank you to the IT people who are working tirelessly this evening, it seems. Okay, I am Beth Collins. I represent the owner of these four properties, Ojai Bungalows and Green Hawk. First, I just want to go to the next slide. I want to thank this council. Thank you for granting us the additional 30 days. Thanks to the ad hoc committee for the work over those additional 30 days. It has resulted in a better development agreement. There are some key improvements, some of which you've heard about, and I will go through them quickly to avoid repetition. First, two more affordable units, one low and one very low. All deed restricted for 55 years. Improved phasing. The purpose of this, honestly, this was a brilliant, I thought, addition in that it really makes sure that there can be seamless phasing of the affordable people into affordable And it really was just a tweak of the order of operations, of the way that it was built, and I'll explain a little bit more in a moment. Additionally, stronger tenant protections. So next slide. Here's the phasing, and I think this, Councilmember Francine, I think this might help, you were asking a lot of questions about how does the phasing work, and so I'm hoping this image can help really bring it home for you who had a question, and then also anyone else out there who's wondering. So the first phase is all the affordable. And you can see there, 27 deed restricted units will be constructed, four at the cottages, I'm sorry, two at the cottages. And actually, that slide's incorrect because it is four at the cottages. There are two other at the cottages that will be constructed. Well, also, the one at Mallory that's at low. Anyway, all of the affordable housing gets constructed first because Montgomery gets constructed, as well as World, which has three, and then as well as the empty units only at cottages, plus the two new units that we've added. And so that means the market rate follows. So that provides an incentive for the developer to build the whole project, right? Because the market rate is at the end, and it helps ensure that the entire project gets constructed, including, you see the 10 market rates at the bottom that are frozen in rental for 10 years. So next slide.
But can I...
Oh, do you have a question?
Yes. It kind of sounds like musical chairs, you know? So you've got, how do you decide? I'm very familiar with the property. I walked it yesterday with two arborists, almost two hours, and I've been there previously, so I know the layout. How do you decide who moves into those two front units?
Great question. So the key is, there are, you mean the two units at cottages?
They're currently empty, at the cottages, yes.
I see. Okay, so you're saying all of this affordable, oh, could we go back to the last slide? You're saying all this affordable will be constructed, and then there will be these tenants at Mallory and cottages that will be potential candidates to be able to move in, and so how do we know who gets to move where? Is that your question?
Yeah, well, everything is phased, so the tenants are phased in. The moving is phased.
Well, actually, all the tenants move in the second phase. They move... They move after the construction of all of the affordable units, right?
Okay, okay, okay. I think I understand. I was imagining something else.
So, so World right now is empty, Montgomery's empty, and there are the two new affordables at cottages, plus the two empty at cottages, which, by the way, happened to be conveniently right next to each other, so the construction on those can be kind of isolated from everybody else. So all the new affordable units will be built altogether, and they're empty. So nobody needs to move for the first phase.
Nobody moves during the first phase.
All the moving happens in the second phase. And that's...
Okay, I got it.
Nothing gets refurbished, and nobody moves until the new units have been constructed.
Okay. Do you get it?
So I thought that was a stroke of brilliance, honestly, from the ad hoc committee, and a really good add, because there was the question about where were the tenants going to go in the interim with the prior DA. So yay for the additional thirty days. I think that's a material improvement. Okay, any other questions? I see it marinating.
Yeah, I'm just, so this, can you give us a timeline for this phasing? Like, so the tenants are in their, are in their sweet little cottages, and they're not going to be disturbed for how long?
So, it's a great question. We don't have, we don't even have a planning commission design approval for Montgomery. We would need to come back for that. The four at the cottages are empty now, so they could be built, I think now. There's the design approval, they'll have everything, there's just a, but, design, what's, you need to get building permits finalized, and, yeah. There's a process with the, finalizing the building permits. And then World is, you know, an existing building, so it will be changed into housing, but that, I expect, would be more expedited. So if I were to give you a rough, based on our experience, what, three years by the time for the first phase, three, four?
It's likely.
It's going to be in the two-to-four-year range, I would imagine, for the first phase construction. Two is probably aggressive, to be honest, for all of it. And only once all the affordable units are built would there be the opportunity for relocating the tenants, right? And so that's when you hit phase two for the relocations.
Okay. In an ideal world, in the meantime, the city, on the land they own, would build some small houses, some kind of tiny, small house village, so that everybody would be able to access affordable, truly affordable, units. It's already percolating in my mind.
And that option's certainly within the council's power.
Yeah.
With appropriate approvals.
Yeah.
Okay, so, phase one, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay. So phase one, and the beautiful thing also, and it's been emphasized, but I'm going to emphasize it again, is that phase one, everything you see there, oh, did we lose something?
No, I thought she said my mic wasn't on.
Just make sure your mic's on.
Just turn your mic off.
Oh, off. It was on when I spoke, right?
You may need to pull the microphone closer here.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Everyone wants to hear you. So the top first phase is fifty-five-year deed-restricted. So that, I mean, honestly, that's a massive gift that this council can give to the legacy of Ojai, is all twenty-seven deed-restricted units. Right now, you have zero deed-restricted units on private property, zero. Okay, second phase, and then that's constructed after we relocate the tenants into the first phase units. Second, or next slide. The, this is a flow chart. I see in pictures better sometimes. We have, we've seen a lot of words, but all tenants get the moving reimbursement, you've heard that. Then there's a qualified expert, the housing authority, which will, any tenant can apply and say, I want to apply for being qualified to be an affordable housing, or affordable unit. If they don't qualify, fine, they're first in line for market rate. If they do qualify, and those are the people at the bottom, people that this council's very concerned about, one, you're first in line for a similar deed-restricted unit at your own level of affordability. If you personally, based on your economics, apply for a very low or a moderate, you get that unit. If you want a larger unit, you get to pay a bit more. You will pay a bit more, but you can get an opportunity for a larger unit. If there is no deed-restricted unit at your level of affordability, the developer has gone to the next step and said, you will be first in line for any unit, and you get that unit for a year. The purpose of this is at least to give them a year, and they will get it locked in at their qualified level of affordability. If there is no other unit available, which we don't expect, because remember, the phasing plan bills us all those twenty-seven units, we only have thirty-one tenants right now, right? They would have to almost all qualify for affordable. But nonetheless, if there is no unit available, right, they get twelve months' rent at their current rent. And they can take that payment and go and use it to, this is a backstop to a backstop to make sure the tenants can land well with this plan. That's what this plan is for. Okay, next slide. So I'm going to, we heard a little bit about the city's housing element, the state of the city. To be honest, you all, you know this, you have a housing crisis in your city. You have a housing crisis. You have substandard units, your own housing element, and this is upsetting, but fourteen percent of your renter-occupied households are overcrowded. From your own element, the housing element says that. Renter-occupied housing is substandard. Eleven percent lack a kitchen, a complete kitchen. Five point seven lack complete plumbing. And you might say, well, maybe that's normal, but if you compare it to the county's percentages, that's actually far worse than the county's doing, and the county's behind. But you're even more behind than the county. Also, your housing stock is old. It's older than what's in the county. Sixty-four percent of your housing units are more than fifty years old, and that far exceeds the county's percentage of just thirty-six. So what does that mean, and why might you care? Old housing stock is inefficient. It wastes water, it wastes energy, it's dangerous to live in, it's more likely to catch on fire, it's more likely to get damaged in an earthquake. Like, Ojai deserves, people deserve safe housing that is compliant with the building codes, and frankly, the only way you have it is to allow development and redevelopment. If you don't approve housing, you can't have housing.
Can we have a quiet here, please? Thank you.
I know people don't like that sentence, apparently, but it's true. If you don't redevelop your housing, you have old antiquated housing stock.
No, it's more affordable.
So, if you don't update your housing stock, the city can't meet its goal for energy efficiency, water efficiency, climate resilience, water, fire, safety. You know, it's important, it's an important issue. Here, this project is a really unique opportunity. You will be able to do better for Ojai. This problem does not get solved unless the building, the city approves updated housing. Next slide. Your Reno goals, regional housing needs, fifty-three units. You, yourself, in your own housing needs assessment, has called out a need for fifty-three units, and this one project provides fifty percent of your fifty-three units. The housing element also, interestingly, calls out for partnerships like this, with private landowners. This is kind of a special thing, I've never done this actually before, had a private developer here, without any city funds, developing affordable housing in Ojai. That's something special. Next slide. The housing element also describes major local displacement pressures. Sometimes, we've heard this, we've heard people talk about this in this city council chamber. You know, you hear about increased rents, you hear about the complete lack of stock, there's just not enough for rent in Ojai. All of these things result in displacement pressures, and your own housing element lays out the actions that the city should take, and this project completely aligns with all those actions. It helps solve all of those issues. This agreement completely aligns with the actions that your own city has laid out in its housing element. So next slide. What does a development agreement do? It gives you twenty-seven deed-restricted for fifty-five years, when you currently have zero on these properties. A lot of people are trying to claim you have thirty-three affordable units, and you don't. You have zero deed-restricted units on these properties. And would it replace, oh, there's a question?
Is that because, as a stand... You're saying that because at this point tomorrow, the, because there's no protection, if the developer wanted to, they could raise the rent.
Right. The rents could be raised at any moment, in compliance with existing tenant protection laws, but it's true. And it could be this owner or someone they sold it to. And this, I'm talking Mallory now. Well, actually, it applies to both the properties. The developer can raise the rents at any time, and your only hook for trying to get that deed restriction is if the rents are low at the moment that they're applying for a permit. So you can raise the rents and then come and apply for a permit. If you're at market rent, there's no hook for the city to get deed restrictions. Separately, cottages has actually already been subdivided, the map's been recorded, there are ten separate parcels, and we can sell those parcels individually. It's a family-owned business. They could get sold to ten people, and those ten people tomorrow could apply for permits with no deed restriction. So you don't have thirty-three affordable units, you don't have any deed restriction.
Now I understand why you say that, yeah.
Okay, good. So sixty-seven are on the table, sixty-seven units, and a lot of people aren't talking about the market rate units, but actually, more units is better for the city, updated units. Twenty-seven of them are deed-restricted. The updated units, as I talked about, they have modern building code compliance, modern water and energy efficiency, it's safer for the tenants and the entire community. The updated phasing plan also provides a bunch of protections for the current tenants. As I just described, those units will be constructed first. It allows first-in-line for their current tenants, and the seamless shifting. I mean, you have a forty percent affordable project here in front of you. Forty percent of the units will be deed-restricted for fifty-five years. That's huge. Okay, there's been mention of environmental issues, I'm going to touch that next. You have thirty-three existed, existing antiquated residential units. Again, it's contrary to maybe thinking, but updating those units actually will reduce and, result in less water usage. I know it's weird to think you have thirty-three units and you could have sixty-seven and use less water. In fact, our calculations, and it's detailed in the letter, is it's half as much water will be used with the updated units. Why is that? Let's go to the next slide. I think we're in like three, yeah, next slide. Okay, why is that? Well, as I described, a lot of your housing stock is very old. In fact, Mallory was built in the forties, and the cottages was built in the twenties. So those are very old buildings, pre-1980 buildings, you know, the showers get to, they use way more water, the toilets use way more water, and the Cal Green standard, which the city will require us to comply with, requires far less, and the developer could opt to go even more water-efficient and may choose to do so, but I'm just using the bare minimum, what's required, and you end up with fifty percent less water. You have twice as many units more and half as much water. And it also allows the renters to relocate into state-of-the-art, efficient units. Next slide. Trees and historic resources. So there were a variety of tree protections, I won't go through too much, Lucas went through it really well. We also have an update from the arborist attached to a letter I provided you today. And we have at cottages, a very careful layout that is designed to protect trees, will have nineteen new oak trees. There was the mention that there are saplings, actually, no, thirty-six inch and forty-eight inch box. These are, these are larger trees, they're not little saplings. Historic protections also. You know, there's this tagline, save the cottages. Actually, the cottages project, it was carefully designed to preserve those cottages. It is, the look and feel of cottages is going to be refurbished and preserved with this project. It's actually going to save the cottages by approving this project. And why is that? Because there are mitigation measures that need to be complied with, and other conditions of approval. And our client has been diligently trying to, you know, refurbish these cottages for a while. Now he's agreed to add two additional affordable units. Again, that will match the current design, it will be on top of an existing garage, it won't have tree impacts, it was a carefully selected location. But again, this is a way to save the cottages and save that feel of historic Ojai on that property. Mallory, next slide. Additional tree protections. You can see the existing site plan on the top with tree outlines, and then the proposed plan. See, there's a huge amount of this tree canopy that is carefully preserved. Next slide. There are a variety of tree protections. In addition, there'll be the plant, the planting of seventy-three new oak trees, again, thirty-six inch to forty-eight inch box. Why so many trees, new trees? Because there is a four-to-one replacement ratio applied and required. So many new trees will be planted, there's a thoughtful layout of those trees. Additionally, there'll be extensive fencing placed around all the trees, monitoring of all grading by an arborist, hand grading in the root zones, actually by hand in the critical root zones, and no pruning except by an arborist, and there will be pre-construction meetings and species surveys to protect the trees. Next slide. Mallory, historic issues. Mallory, as you all know, is a 1940s motor lodge that was converted to residential use. The EIR found no significant impact with a variety of additional conditions like photo documentation, interpretation, onsite commemoration, et cetera. They're detailed in CR-1 and 2 in the EIR. And additionally, the Ojai Historic Preservation Commission considered the EIR and actually recommended a project approval, and now it is too late. I mean, that was many years ago, it's too late to try, to challenge that EIR. And the Ojai Bungalows project does not modify the Mallory project. There's been no change, there's no significant, new significant impacts associated with this development agreement. Instead, it just allows the project to continue forward. Next slide, we have Montgomery. Ten proposed oak trees are, ten oak trees are proposed to be removed, but the arborist does believe that number is conservative, and there, there will be a required replacement ratio of two to one. Next slide, World University, no tree or historic impacts.
Could you go back to that...
Yes.
...previous slide? I had a, yesterday, I did walk with your, your arborist, excellent, Matt Mallett, and Jan Sko. So I'm at peace about the trees at the cottages. They explained why some had to be removed, some were dead, some were iffy, and so that's fine. But I have not yet really looked at, this is the problem with bundling the four projects together. So you've just made a very significant statement. Here's, here, and there's an arborist report on those trees as well in here. Okay. I just need to wrap my head, sometimes it's going so fast. He's saying ten proposed oak tree removals, but arborist believes that number is conservative, and I kick myself for not going out there today, but I do what I can. And I kick myself for not going out there today, but I do what I can.
Can I just ask, when you say conservative, you mean it's likely to be fewer trees than that or more trees than that?
Oh, fewer. Pardon me.
Oh, fewer?
Yes, yes, I apologize. No, I apologize. I meant conservative as in it overstates the impacts. So fewer, he thinks it's going to be likely than, fewer than 10 trees.
Okay. I don't, okay, all right, thank you for explaining that.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, next, next slide? Okay, World University, existing building, no change in the building footprint, no tree or historic impacts. Okay, finally, traffic has been raised as well. There, so let's go to the next slide. Sorry, I am trying to move and I'm almost done. So the development agreement does not result in any traffic impacts. Why? Because we have 33 existing units plus the World University site. Traffic is now in the SEQA world measured with vehicle miles traveled. And the OPR, the state, has put out guidance saying affordable housing is screened out. So Montgomery is screened out. So then we look at the three other sites where there is a portion affordable, but not 100%. And the average daily trips associated with each one of those is less than 110. In fact, even if you add them together, it's less than 110. And 110 is the magic number that the state uses to screen out smaller projects for VMT.
Do we air out our concerns now or later?
You're welcome to, if it's more efficient to do it now, then.
Okay.
I think questions now, you know, commentary after the public's spoken.
Are you finished, Beth? So we can pull up the slides again if we have questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, did you have a question about this slide?
I'm going to wait.
Okay. So next slide. Next slide, and Lucas covered it well. The city has complied with SEQA. Next slide. We're down to the three options. Okay. What, three options. Next slide, I think this will make it easier. So option one, the city wins the litigation. And actually, I guess the first option is, well, let's do this. Option one, the city, even if the city wins litigation, it only gets 35 market units. 10 at cottages and 25 at Mallory. That's it. Their market rate. And why? Because of what we talked about. The rates could, the rents can always be raised and there aren't, is no deed restriction. Other problem with option one is you're going to be paying Mr. Summers significant amounts of money or whoever else you hire as outside counsel to defend the litigation. And there are no added tenant protections. Next slide. Option two, let's go to the next slide. There, what if we win? Well, there you'll get 40 units and seven of them will be deed restricted. Why? Because we get to build Mallory and we get to build the cottages. The old way, under the old approvals, cottages wouldn't have the two additional affordable units. And Mallory would have the seven existing affordable units. But significant downside here, city pays its attorney's fees, city may have to pay my attorney's fees or whomever he decides to hire or the owner decides to hire, and no tenant protections. Then option three, which I hope is the winner, is the DA. 67 units, no attorney's fees, not for your attorney. Why? Because even if this DA is sued, as your own city attorney said, the owners have to pay the city attorney's attorney's fees. The phasing, as we talked about, has the affordable houses constructed first and added tenant protections. So in sum, this project makes sense. For current tenants of both cottages and Mallory, it makes sense for the renters in It makes sense for preserving the historical feel of Ojai, for moving the city toward its climate goals and water and energy savings. It also increases safety for its residents. And it represents a huge step forward for Ojai. And we hope you choose to take that step and approve the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I do have a question about the RENA number. And maybe this is more for James. 53 units for our, I was under the impression that our accessory dwelling units make that 53.
The accessory dwelling units count towards our RENA numbers. I think we are hoping that that makes up a good chunk of them. I think that we've, it only counts in the above moderate category. And I believe, I'm trying to remember the number offhand that we've had in the last year. Was it a dozen or so?
It's more than a dozen.
Okay. Okay, 15 or so in the last year. So, so I don't know that that will make up all of that count and then we won't, it only counts towards above moderate, but that may make up a large chunk of our above moderate.
Okay, thank you.
Through, through the mayor, are the ADUs deed restricted?
So the ADUs are not deed restricted.
So that would be the material difference. And I am aware of ADUs in other communities renting for many thousands of dollars, even a 400-square-foot ADU. So the deed restriction would be missing from that piece. Thank you.
All right. We will move on now to the council ad hoc negotiating committee report from council members Wyreck and Platts.
I'm going to try to make several points. I'll probably forget some. Arguably, I'm, arguably, I'm responsible for this effort. Because when I was on this council, and remember, this was before the current mayor's term began, I was looking at a situation of entitlements that had expired with the city and the present, and the previous councils have a habit of us rolling them over, pretty much without question. I had already raised the issue that this was not a good habit to continue. And so when this came before the council, well, actually, it didn't come before the council, it was approved by the planning commission without any new conditions, simply a rollover of the entitlement. Remember, council had 10 days to appeal the decision of planning commission. And so I kind of did a hurry-up, brought it before council, and the council saw the logic, saw the need to try to provide some protection and some degree of enhanced affordability that did not exist at all from that planning commission approval. In particular, because of the track map approval for the cottages. In particular, lacking in protection for the cottages tenants. In particular. And so it was important to me to see if we could get council approval to approve, whether we could move into a previously underutilized part of our municipal code. I thought the development agreement tool could be used to achieve a better outcome for this community. And I think the case has been made for why that is, you know, before us today. So we had to deal, this is not a blank slate. This was a long history, as was outlined, and an approval of planning commission. And I decided to, you know, to lead the effort to do what we could. Choices have to be made recognizing constraints to achieve the best possible outcome. To not recognize reality, to not recognize the nature of these constraints leads to hurting those most vulnerable. You know, the last thing we should be doing here is setting up some sort of blank-sake condition and not engaged in the kind of protection that we have the ability to do so with this development agreement. The current status is not protection. The current status is nowhere near the level of protection provided by this development agreement for the existing tenants. So really, a vote to continue or not, to proceed with this development agreement is really a vote, it's almost, it's almost a matter of thinking really clearly through the nature of making choices under realistic constraints, doing what you can. And are you making a decision, you know, on the basis of incorporating all of that information in terms of your ethic, ethical and moral choices, are you not? I think this development agreement does that level of protection that is not there without it. True today, true at the time that I led the effort to engage the appeal, get the council approval, and proceed with the development agreement negotiations. Been going on for years. You know, I think the, one of the, I think pernicious aspects of this debate is that the opponents act like there's just not enough very low and low units in the mix. It's well-known that a mix of income levels, living amongst one another in well-designed housing is by far a healthier community than the alternative. You know, segregation is not healthy in any way, shape, or form.
Interesting point.
And so the proposals that have been made to, you know, increase one category of housing and taking away another and not adding workforce housing, not having a net gain, is, I think, really just disingenuous. We have an ability here to get an unprecedented level of housing enhancement from a private, not subsidized development, unprecedented in terms of anything that I've heard and people that are informed on these issues call and tell me they cannot believe what we got out of this agreement. The level of affordable housing percentage, the level of tenant protection is just not seen in private, unsubsidized development. Frankly, by all objective standards, and I, I say this, I hope not to, we pretty much got as much as you can get out of a private development that's not subsidized. And that doesn't mean we shouldn't have public development, that we shouldn't have philanthropy-supported and tax-dollar-supported housing. We should have both. But the low and very low numbers come from more of that type of approach that should be part of adding to and being part of what this development agreement represents. Again, the cottages is already subdivided and that further undermines even the protections that state would have if we walk away from this development agreement and why this is so important. If we want sustainable community, and I heard the reaction about, oh, you know, we don't want development, how do you achieve a change towards sustainability without some form of sustainable, proper development? Change means development. Change means looking at things like increasing water efficiency, things that need to be done to get to, how to provide workforce housing across the income spectrum from very low to moderate to market to reduce the highest percentage of commuter traffic in the county. That's us. How can anyone argue that they want no development, they want no enhancement of housing, and we want sustainability by having the highest level of vehicle miles traveled to get to and from your jobs in the county? Talk about climate change, talk about emissions, talk about all kinds of things. Sustainability is part and parcel achieved with affordable housing enhancement. So I think the only bad deal here, well, before I say that, I really appreciate the information on the tree canopy. It looks to me like the ratios are very clear, that we're enhancing the ecology of our urban forestry management with this proposal, not taking away. I appreciated the information on the water. And I want to say that I just think that when you look at the entire picture with the realistic constraints in place, with the reality in place, not acting like the status quo is sustainable, because it's not. We've heard all the reasons why the current, the status quo, if we reject the development agreement and go back to status quo, we remove a large, significant level of protection for the existing tenants. Significant reduction in protection. So the only bad deal is rejecting this DA, rejecting this development agreement. That's the bad deal for the tenants. It's a bad deal for the community. It's a step backwards towards achieving sustainability in a real, functioning sense. And I think it's a bad deal for Ojai if we reject it, because this provides an example of what can be achieved for other communities with, on top of, in addition to supplementing taxpayer and philanthropy subsidized progress on housing. We need both. And so I think that we need all of the above and I just, I think this council needs to think seriously whether we want to look at this reality, take a positive step, not to the exclusion of other efforts, but also not trying to achieve some sort of, not trying to say that we are going to reject it because there's some status quo that in fact does not exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wyreck. And thank you, and it's been a pleasure working with you on this. I know there's plenty of you who think Bill and I are just getting paid by the Beckers. And I keep telling Jeff that check hasn't got to my office yet. I, I'm disappointed in our community, frankly. I love this town. I grew up here. I've lived here darn near my whole life, other than going to college. I have bled for this town, doing 14, 15 years now of civic work and volunteering my time and all kinds of agencies and everything else. And what's disappointing to me is we're on our 18th meeting on this thing. It's been three years. This thing was passed a long time ago. We've met in closed session, I don't know how many dozens of times, to brief our fellow council members who still, I'm not sure, understand it, even though we've done everything we can to make sure along the whole path, everybody was aware. But there's still a small group of people in town that aren't willing to let this debate happen without poisoning the well before they got here. I don't care if you disagree with me. I respect if you disagree with me. But if you don't respect me understanding this and you don't try harder to understand the real facts and you're led by the BS that's out there, then it's incredibly difficult to have this conversation with our community. And that's the problem I'm fearful of, that our community has been misled, that people are willing to mislead so many of our residents with misinformation and frankly BS about this project. Just today, from Steve Colome, who I respect a lot, there's an email floating around saying these were secret negotiations, that people only do development agreements for football stadiums and that Bill and Ryan are equal and trying to do things behind everybody's back. We're, this has been as transparent as we can get. We've never hidden anything. All we want is everybody to understand the full set of the facts. And if you disagree with me, I respect that. If you disagree with the development agreement based on real, honest-to-God facts, I respect that. But if you're here talking about things that aren't true, it's impossible to have this debate. And this is why our town has a hard time doing grown-up things. This is it. We haven't done any of this for, how old is our housing stock? We've got to come to grips with balancing things correctly. Not develop everything. I have heard this project called a build-out of Ojai so many times. I've heard it called a, we want to develop over the entire town. I've heard it called a massive development in Ojai. These projects were approved before any of us got here. And we're trying to make what was put in our hands, the cards we were dealt into the best possible hand we can have. And I, I want to have an honest debate about it. It's not an easy decision. Are we willing to take the risk of a massive amount of money and have a worse deal if we win a litigation? And an even worse deal and even more money if we lose a litigation versus what the opportunity at hand is? versus what the opportunity at hand is? Are we, as a community, staunchly defending what's on the ground at these properties to the extent that a prior council's decision should be negated, should be overturned, and we're willing to take that risk? Or should we look forward and say, all right, let's make the best deal we can moving forward? Let's eliminate the risks, let's eliminate the uncertainty for the tenants? Let's do the best deal we can, given the cards we were dealt? But I can't have that conversation. Unfortunately, there's a group of people, and I think most of us during this election have figured out who they are, who say things like, it's secret negotiations, and it's a, only the type of agreement you have for a football stadium. People who've told me that the only reason I could have, and one of those persons just yelled at me, that the only reason I could have agreed to a 30-day extension to continue the negotiation is because I wanted to help the developer's case and pack the record with more information so they'll win their litigation. I've been told I'm in the pocket of the developer. I've been told I'm renting a place from the developers. I have been told so much BS, and I can't even get through the entire list of all of the misinformation that's out there. But I still respect people who might disagree with this. It's not an easy decision. It's different for Ojai. But we have done everything we can. And I am telling you right at this moment, I don't know whether I'm voting for this thing or not tonight, but I've done everything I can, even knowing that, to make sure that the best deal we could get is on this piece of paper. I guarantee you that we have put everything we have into this to ensure that if we can't avoid what is the true enemy, which is a litigation where both sides lose, the tenants lose, that we are trying, I am trying, to get the best deal out there we can have to have this debate legitimately. But unfortunately, it's not possible. It's just not. Even tonight, I've heard people yelling, heard people be upset. I got emails today of things that are just factually not true about what this is all about. So I don't know where the public sits, because I don't trust a public that doesn't understand this situation. We are not talking about building this thing from the ground up. Some other council decided to do that with no affordable housing barely, 15 years ago, with a tree permit, with mitigations and everything else that was debated here. And if you weren't here, I know what that debate was like, because I was here. I wasn't on the council, but I remember it. I've lived in Mallory Way. I know what it's like. This is what we have come up with, and I hope everybody does this tonight. I hope they all close their eyes for a second and take a little deep breath and calm all the anxiety that we all have, because I know this much. Darn near everybody in here, if not everybody, has the same goals to make the best decision for Ojai. I know everybody on this council does. I know our staff does. We may disagree, but I know we all want to do what's best for Ojai. So I ask this. If you came in here tonight, is there anything new you learned by listening to everything? And if you did, did you already come in here with your mind made up? Take a deep breath and think about it, because all I ask is that at some point everybody gives this thing a clarity of mind, not about what you've heard online, not about the snarky Facebook crap, not about all the BS that's floating around out there, but looks at what we're dealing with in front of us. Nobody else's opinion, yours. You, as a person who cares about Ojai, who can take one second and clear your mind and just focus on what the alternatives to trying to do a development agreement are. Are you prepared for the litigation and the costs? Are you prepared for the evictions of the tenants? Are you prepared for no move-out costs? Are you prepared for no affordable units being there? Are we, as a community, prepared? And are you, as an individual, prepared to allow the continuity of no more new housing in Ojai, of no affordable deed-restricted housing in Ojai, and a litigation that could significantly deplete the ability of this town, with the size of our budget, to pave the roads, to keep the lights on, to do those things we want to do? Are we prepared for that? Because that is part of the real situation.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not finished.
But really eager to hear from the public. Isn't, are we still going to have council discussion after we hear from the public?
I'm going to finish.
Council questions first, correct?
Questions, yeah.
And.
Council questions first, correct?
And with that, I want to say that that is, what I was asked to speak about was how we got to this point in the negotiation. And that is it. Well, I'm glad to talk to you about it, but I can tell you that I'm not berating anybody. I'm asking you to think about it a little differently. I can tell you that this negotiation has gone from us not getting anything out of it to beating them up over and over again to get as much as we got to. But I'm not speaking, maybe, you know what? Maybe you're not the person I'm concerned about. But I can tell you, I'm not identifying those people specifically. You're not who I'm thinking about. Len, I respect you a lot. But I know those people who are there have really done a disservice to this community by not allowing people to completely understand the truth about what's going on. And I hope they can understand it. And then if we all come to a conclusion, I support it 100%. I just want, and I beg the public, to have an open mind and think about this clearly.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Ryan. We will move on now to council questions, and let's do round robin, so one at a time. You want to start, Randy?
Well, except for the ones that have already asked 20 questions, they have to go to the back door.
No, no, I'm fine with that.
You know, we have, I had a whole list of questions, and it's interesting. I wanted to chime in while everyone was speaking, because it'd been easier, but, you know, landlord-tenants' rights and responsibilities, it sounds like, you know, I did a little research, too. It sounds like staff has reviewed this and feels that the Becker Group is in compliance? Or have you not?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Okay, it's landlord-tenants' rights and responsibilities. It's from the Ventura County. And it just states that there's relationships between landlords and tenants that have to be abided by. And based on what I heard tonight, I just want your opinion. Do you believe that the Becker Group is acting in the best interest of the tenants that are presently living on those, on all four sites? Or I should say the two main sites?
I guess I would respond.
Doesn't have to be very deep. You can say yes or no, or let me get back to you.
I'm unaware of any concerns related to that, but it isn't necessarily the focus of this item either.
Yeah, we can't really discuss.
So, we've got a Tenant Protection Act of 2019, Civil Code 1946, 1946.2, 1947.12, and 1947.13. And again, it's the same thing. It talks about the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, and it just goes into detail about, are on development agreements, are the developers looking out in the best interest of the tenants that are on the site? So again, if you haven't looked that up or you haven't read it, I'll hand that to you. But I think it's important that we get a consensus out of this meeting tonight that they are abiding by that.
We have no evidence of lack of compliance with the Tenant Protection Act by a Becker.
Okay. Our timeline, I just wanted to be clear in it. We started in 2005. That was when it started. 2007 is when it was finalized, correct?
Yes.
It was approved?
Yes.
Okay. 2000, or 2005 it started, 2007, 2009 I have council approved. What happened in 2012?
Give me one second. 2012 was the Mallory Way approval at the Planning Commission with an application earlier, I believe, 2010? I'll ask Lucas to confirm.
2007 was when they first applied for Mallory Way.
Okay. And 2005 was the cottages?
Correct.
Okay. 2016, there was a revision. Do you know what the revision was? To either Mallory or to the cottages?
Wasn't to Mallory, it was to cottages.
And what was the revision?
So the revision was exterior components of each of those 10 units. So remember, there's 10 units for Mallory, for cottages, and each of those received minor modifications to the design. The design itself had to go to Planning Commission for review and approval.
Okay, and those are consistent with what they're doing today?
Correct.
Okay. Deed restrictions, you know, I wanted to go back. It's too, I think it'd be, Mayor, it'd be too hard to go way back into this, but, I looked at income limits and I looked at rent limits. And I looked at extremely low, very low, low-income, medium, and moderate, what you provided us. And then you gave us four categories of each. So I'm going to go to low-income and medium, and that's what we're looking at. But the ranges are, for income limits, are $70,000, $80,000, $90,000, and $100,000. And then I come across low-income on the other side, which are rent limits. And if you're generating $70,000 a year, your rent should be $16,16. Are any of these numbers over in the rent limits? Are we holding the Becker Group to those numbers as far as their rent, what they can rent those units for?
The deed restriction would hold them to those.
Will hold them to those. Okay. Do you guys understand what I'm trying to say on that?
Yes, but are you also asking if, what's going on currently, or just?
No, I just want to make sure that any agreement that we come to. Okay. Then, you answered the question on are agreements like this, development agreements, normal? I would think the, is one of the reasons that we decided to look at four units versus individual, was it was a benefit to the community going that way versus individually?
The idea was that by bundling the four properties, we could get more affordable deed-restricted units.
And then I wrote this note here, Mayor, real quick, and then I'll turn it over to you. But I think in the, in the three areas that the Becker Group showed us, the worst-case scenario, the medium, and then the agreement, if it goes through, I was looking at percentages. With the two lawsuits, it seemed like the middle ground was we would get 40 units with seven units affordable. So instead of 67, we're getting 40 instead of 35. We're getting 40 units with seven affordable. And when you do the ratio, that's 15%. You agree with that?
Yes.
And right now, we are at 40% with the?
Under the development agreement.
And in the first agreement, at 35, we would be at zero? Nothing?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor Six, could I answer one?
Sure, go ahead.
One other aspect of the properties being looked at together, significantly enhanced tenant protection that's not achievable piecemeal, as well as the much larger number of affordable units. So the ability to have more affordable units with tenant protection, that cannot be done piecemeal.
Right, just to follow up on that, Mayor. I was going to have them break down each site, because I've heard that that was an alternative. And again, I think if we broke down each site and said, what are we getting affordable? One, we would get affordable, and correct me if I'm wrong, we'd get affordable, but it would be at the medium level. We would get no deed restrictions if we went to each site and did them individually. Am I correct?
If we did the four sites individually, at most, if the city wins the lawsuit, we would get, and the developers still chose to rebuild, we would get affordable units at cottages and Mallory, zero at World, and Montgomery would likely be zero as well.
And no deed restricted? We'd get affordable, would they be deed restricted?
They would be deed restricted if we win the lawsuit, at 55 years, at cottages and Mallory, but only if we win the lawsuit. If we lose the lawsuit, nothing will be deed restricted.
Okay. I've got more when we're done.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. With South Montgomery, because we have not really, it hasn't gone before the Planning Commission, or hasn't had a traffic study, or any of that. So if we agree to what's before us, and I'm going to have, during council discussion, I'm going to propose conditions of approval. But what exactly, I mean, I'm understanding vaguely, we're approving, you know, the affordability and all of that, but it still has to go through all the normal planning process, all of that. So we're not approving, I want to be really clear on what we're exactly we're approving, and I'm sure the neighbors do as well.
Yeah, so we'd be approving the number of units at that site, but all of the design would still be, would still have to go through Planning Commission and be subject to design review.
And traffic.
And we, the council, I think.
Council could require a traffic study. It's presently drafted.
And the Planning Commission recommended that at one point.
Right.
Yeah.
That could be added, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have until we do council discussion.
Other questions, Randy?
Just have two more. On the deed-restricted units, are they going to be tied to a CPI? Is there, is there going to be a minimal increase, or are they locked into? Well, this might be for Lucas. Are they locked into a county-wide income levels on affordability? Or are they locked in? If we lock in a number on any, on this, on this agreement, are they locked in that for the life of their 55 years?
It's through the affordable, it'd be through the Affordable Housing Agreement itself, and typically you can set CPI.
Pardon me?
Let me clarify that. Yes, they will be locked into the state income limits that are set for the county that go up a little bit every year as the state decides to go up. But it's fixed, so it's not a fixed dollar amount, not, you know, it won't, the agreement won't state 850 a month. It'll state affordable to persons making very low income, or low income, or moderate is applicable. And the state defines that as their income divided by 12, divided by 30. 30% of their income is the rent.
So remember I was talking about, the HCD comes up with a packet, and it's for every single county within the state? That's the adjustment. I called it CPI, but it's actually that adjustment each year.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was a CPI or what we were going to call it, okay? I just, my thoughts were that we were locking in this price, which for 55 years is pretty incredible when you, when you think about something like that.
You're locking them into that state income and rental category. That's what you're locking them into.
And are the, would the renters be required to prove on an annual basis their income level? How does that work?
So the way we proposed it in the development agreement is that it would be qualified through the area housing agency, and that way it's, you know, kind of a fair, unbiased, neutral. And so it would be qualified through them, following their procedures.
And who's responsible to do that? We to them, or them to them?
So.
The developer will be required to contract with area housing authority to run that process and to check each tenant's income as qualifications. And if AHA, for any reason, doesn't do so, then the city will, the city will select an alternative housing entity to do so.
Okay. And then, Mayor, the last question I have is, we had on the development, I don't know, 24 years ago, 25 years ago, on Fulton? Is it Fulton?
Yeah, yeah.
And they had some form of deed restriction on them.
Yes.
Do we know what that was?
Yeah, we, those were moderate income restrictions for, I forget the unit count on that site, but they were moderate income, and they're coming up.
It was 25. That one was 25.
Yeah, and they're coming up, I believe, for, out of those restrictions now.
Yes.
So.
I can answer that a little.
So that form of restrictions now allows the individuals who bought those homes to sell those homes now at market rate?
Correct, and that's why, as we pointed out, you could, you could have a deed restriction for any amount of time, and that's why we were saying, you know, we pushed to try to up that to 55 years versus the 25 years that some of the others have had.
Mayor, may I clarify? Because I've talked to one of the, you know, those people got a really wonderful, sweet deal. And in an ideal world, they would pass that on. But once children are gone, they have a golden opportunity. They can, for example, live somewhere else, rent at market rate, or they can, they can now sell and not reciprocate the gift. So we have to make sure that if we proceed, that, our details won't allow that. And I think, yeah.
And the heart of it is that those, that Fulton project only had a 30-year restriction, which was standard at the time, I should note.
Yeah, yeah.
That was what was done at the time. Now we have an opportunity, if the council so approves, at 55 years, or longer, if the council were to choose.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, Mayor, I just have.
And the developer were to agree.
I have a couple more, unless, 2009, the HPC reviewed this project, correct? I had 2009, I'm pretty sure that was the first time, maybe. It could have been reviewed later. So the question on the state guidelines, have they changed? Are the guidelines that the, that HPC reviewed, these sites, are they the same today as then? Or have the state guidelines changed?
The, you're talking about state guidelines for historic resources?
Yes.
Correct? Those, those state guidelines do adjust over time. However, the state guidelines at the time, they met those through the mitigation. Through the mitigation through cottages and the mitigation through Mallory as well. So those two pieces that we were talking about earlier, those were, those were asks that anytime, look, I've worked in other cities, and I've seen these types of mitigation pieces. One imposed, and then two followed through.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, HPC, that commission doesn't make the rules, and they don't make the guidelines, they follow them.
Correct, through mitigation.
Are the, and you're saying the guidelines are different today than they were then, or are they the same?
Well, in terms of state guidelines, I would assume that they've changed over time, in terms of how that's, how that's been addressed. It's not fair to assume that they've remained stagnant over these last 15 years.
I don't, I don't think we can confirm that, though. We can, we can confirm that and get back to you.
Right.
I think the one important thing to note, because we have been asked about if Historic Preservation Commission had reviewed these projects, and they did review these projects, and they did not recommend landmark designation for these projects.
Right. So, and, and then the, it's the same thing when we go to the AR, the EIR, it was done in 2010. So, have those guidelines changed? Are they different today than they were then?
For the sequel guidelines, yes, those have changed since 2010. But sequel law does allow an existing EIR to be teared off of if the project itself has not changed since it was previously approved, and there's no evidence that there's been any significant change in the environmental characteristic as relevant to the project since then.
Okay. I don't want to waste any more time, unless, if no one has any more questions.
I have a question. I have a, um, let me see if I know how to ask the question.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the 10-year, whatever, uh.
Rental restrictions.
Rental restrictions. In the meantime, because we're in, California is in such a huge housing crisis, more and more homeless people on the street, people living in cars, the state, if they make stricter tenant protection laws, but, how does that work?
If the state is?
Is our, is our, is our agreement stronger than, can, can, does, how, do state mandates, how do they impact their, the development agreement? I think that's my question.
The stronger will control. So, if this, if the legislature in their wisdom adopts a requirement that there be two years of rental assistance, if a tenant is relocated, that would control over our 12-month requirement in the development agreement. If the state keeps it at the current one month of rental assistance, our 12-month rental assistance in the development agreement controls. Whichever is stronger will control.
Whichever is stronger will control. Okay. But council, at this point, could put more conditions, and see, just ask the developer.
Yeah, council can, can, within reason, impose.
Reason, yeah.
Greater standards, and then it'll be up to the developer, of course, to accept or reject.
Okay, thank you.
Or negotiate further.
Yeah. Okay, that's all.
Okay, all right, great. Randy, you good?
Yeah, just had a, a couple more questions based by comments that we received today. This is from Liz Fish, and she was asking, she's a member of the Ojai Women's Fund. I'm not going to read into this, other than the question that she asked is, "My business supports many needs and nonprofits locally, and I expect any business working here in our community to do the same." So, the question to the Becker Group, the Becker Group is no exception. If you're already doing this, please let our community know your good work. So, other than developing in our community, what else are you doing? I'm talking more of your business than, than, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm speaking a little more as to your, to your business versus your individuals. I think that's what the question here was, is, is, is the Becker Group contributing to the, to the benefits of the community, other, you know, outside of developing? Because I think you're, I think what you build is excellent. In fact, I think your work is outstanding. And I, and I think the retrofit that you're going to do, the cottage, is going to be incredible, because you have to. But what other things does, does your business do to support our community?
First, Randy, let me clarify that the Becker Group does not own any of the properties. The Becker family and the Johnker family own three of the properties. One of our clients owns the World University site. The Becker Group is the management company, which my wife and I own, and we're based in Ventura. So, that's the first thing. We do. Uh, yes. We do management for a number of other individuals in the area, and we employ all sorts of different people for all sorts of different services, including landscapers, arborists, you know, cleaning people, those kind of services. So, yes, you know, I'm a member of the Ojai Valley Museum. I help with the Ojai Valley Tennis Tournament. I have a dog. So.
That's huge.
This is about projects that have been in the works that we've been trying to put together with you guys.
No, no, I get that. I, I also, I'm trying to respond to what, what Liz's concern was to me was, we value and appreciate what you're trying to do. I, I think.
Well, some in the community don't.
Well, I, no, I think actually, I think the community does. I think there's, I, I think some might be a little lost, but I think there is good, and everyone that, that, I, I think everyone wants to see this successful in some way or another. But the question that Liz was asking is, as, you know, as a developer in our community, what are you giving back? And what I just heard was you're giving back jobs, you're giving back your time to the community, and, and organizations. And I think that's what she needed to know, because she didn't know that. You're a pretty private person, as well as, I have a hard time with your first name.
Mr. Johnker.
Yeah. But, uh, so I'm just trying to say that, the, the more we know you, and the more you know us, the more we're going to be compatible to what you're trying to achieve for us. And, and I'm going to talk later about that word development, but I'm, I'm not going to get into it now, but thank you, Mayor. Oh, one last thing, RSOs, rent stabilization ordinance. We don't have one.
Correct.
So, one of the things that we might want to do, and this is all said and done, is we might want to get on that. Because a rent stabilization ordinance allows us a lot more influence and control over what we would like to see done in our community.
Let's, uh, let's take a five-minute break, and then we will come back with public comments. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, we have 29 comments, so we'd like to move things along. If you could take your seats and come to quiet, please. And we'll begin. Hi, everybody. Could you sit down, please, and come to quiet? We'll begin with Katie Wilson, then Leslie Rule, and then Grace Malloy.
And we might wait till we have the five.
I'm just telling.
Randy, is your mic open?
Okay, once again, we'll begin with Katie Wilson, then Grace Malloy, then Len Claye. Okay, quiet, please. No, Rob and Godfrey, can you tell us how many people we have on Zoom?
We have 33 people on Zoom.
Okay, so we have 29 here, although I think some people left, and 33 on Zoom.
I like, my motion would be that we limit public comment to either a minute and a half or two minutes, so that, so that we can get through this. Microphone?
I, I, I'm not in favor of limiting speakers to one minute or one and a half minutes.
We usually debate a motion after it's seconded.
Okay.
Thanks, Grace.
And I would agree that because the, there's so many people, and this is such an important topic, that we should allow everyone three minutes. And, and just, if we could all just keep it to three minutes, though.
No, there's a motion on the, on the table, and it's for two minutes. Is there a second?
Last time, we didn't have, we, we had 40 missing speakers, because this was the decision. And it was because people left, because they didn't want to wait for everybody to speak for three minutes. Do you not, you don't think that that's an important part of it? It's not about limiting people's time, it's about respecting everybody else's time.
In terms of procedures and purposes of debating the motion, I will second the motion for two minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
You have a debate on a motion.
It's up, it's up, we can vote on it, it's fine with me.
Okay, fine.
How many we have? Do we have the majority who want two minutes?
Who's in favor? Randy has a motion.
I want to make a friendly amendment to your motion.
And, no. No. Let's, let's, let's.
The maker of the motion can reject a friendly amendment. Another council member, correct, another council member could make a substitute motion. You could make a substitute motion.
Okay, my, my substitute motion is, there, there is sense in the interest of time to, can, can we, can we do a quick math? If everybody spoke, there's.
A hundred and eighty-eight minutes or so. I might be off a little bit, but three hours.
Sixty speakers, three minutes is three hours, if there's all sixty speakers.
So that would be 11:30. Well, I, I, I personally am fine with that, but I realize that we're impacting people's lives. So can we have a middle path, two minutes to people who've spoken before? Some people have spoken multiple times at previous meetings. Is that legal?
We have no way of controlling that.
Councilmember Francina, I don't think we have the information to correctly assess that, and I would recommend against it, because this is fundamental First Amendment requirements. It's got to be even for everyone. Two minutes or three minutes, but it's got to be even for all.
But can, does, does the mayor have the power to give someone an extra minute? That's within the mayor's power, right?
The mayor can provide extra time, the rest of the council can overrule that. And I would recommend if we have a vote on setting a time limit, that we stick to the limit.
Okay, so do you have a substitute motion?
Counsel, I'd like to jump in. On Zoom, we have now 37 participants, and we have six hands, five hands raised at this point. So we don't really know who's going to want to speak.
Okay, so maybe six or seven people who want to speak on this item.
Well, I imagine if they're on the Zoom link, they're on the Zoom link to speak.
Okay, so I'm in favor of the three minutes, and, and hopefully it plays out, so that, I, I'm in favor of three minutes.
Okay, that's your substitute motion?
Yes, my substitute, because some people will not take up three minutes. They will realize they don't, we can keep emphasizing, they don't have to speak two minutes, three minutes, they can speak one minute.
And I will, I will second that. All in favor?
Let's have a roll call.
Okay, roll call on Susa's substitute motion.
Okay, roll call.
I, I'm in favor, because many people will only speak one minute.
I think Robin's, you want to do a roll call, please?
Yeah, I'm ready to do a roll call here.
I would recommend a roll call, yeah.
Robin?
Okay. Councilmember Haney.
No.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts.
No.
Councilmember Wyrick.
No.
Mayor Sticks.
Yes. Okay, now we have another motion. Can we have a, do you want to repeat your motion, Randy?
That we just limit the public comments to two minutes.
Two minutes, okay, and we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call on that one, please, Robin?
Okay. Councilmember Blatts.
Yeah, and out of respect for everyone who wants to speak, not out of limiting what anybody wants to say. And it's also a standing rule we generally have as well.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
No, because.
There's no because, it's a vote.
Let's just vote. Let's finish the vote.
It's a vote.
Okay.
Mayor Protem Haney?
You already asked me. Yes. I made the motion, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, we will begin public comment, two minutes each. We'll begin with Katie Wilson, Grace Malloy, and Len Claye.
Hi, my name is Katie Wilson, and my husband and I have lived here in Ojai for 40 years. We've raised two children here, and we are very aware of the issues with the high in, high housing increase in expense. We came here tonight, and I'm, we really enjoyed the project that they presented. And we believe that you should move forward with this, because it's a win-win for everyone. It not only provides the tenant protections that are so important, but it also provides extra low-income housing, extra housing which is greatly needed. It will provide jobs, it will protect the properties from becoming rubble, because they have to be refurbished at some point. And we just think that it's the best for the, the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Next, we have Grace Malloy, then Len Claye, and then Linda Caldwell.
Okay, I'm going to talk really fast. Thank you, council members and staff, for your tireless time and attention to this proposal, and to your beloved community, especially you two. I'd like to use my time to remind you all of your commitments that you made in these last couple of meetings on this subject, and the requests that you made in the July 12th motion that was passed 3-2, to go back into negotiations with the developer. Councilmember Blatts, in the July and September meetings wisely said, "I don't think it's appropriate to allow this project to go through, regardless of whether it's vested or when it happened, without affordable housing being replaced out of these units, and we need to figure out a way to do it." And also, we're all sitting here trying to figure out how to either make it better or throw it out if we have to. And I was, quote, "I was really clear that I want to see the water addressed and possibly a net zero policy." Councilmember Wyrick noted in July, "A lot of very important issues have been raised tonight, so I'm not prepared to approve anything." And Mayor Protem Haney said beautifully, "This isn't about the Becker Group, it's about our community, and also, it's time to take care of our people that don't make $100,000, $50,000, or even 40 per year." And my favorite, "There is no one on this dais who would ever evict anyone from their home, zero chance of that." So I want to ask you, have you seen all the elements you asked to be investigated addressed? Net zero water, the hiring of an affordable housing consultant, oak preservation, and an accurate study of the current income levels of the current residents of both cottage properties? The big question tonight is, is this proposal significantly different than the one you made the, these comments on? If you read through the documents, there are three differences between the July 12th and October drafts. Are, and those are, two more affordable units, bringing the total to seven truly, actually, low-income units that these folks can afford, and an additional six months of paid rent at the level they've been paying after eviction, so that brings to one-year total. And lastly, the super obvious phasing of the project, I'm just going to finish this wrong sentence, phasing of the project such that the low-income units are actually existing for the evicted cottage tenants enough to change all of your minds.
Thank you, Grace, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Next, we have Len Claye, then Linda Caldwell, and then Ray Powers.
Leonard Claye, I live in the city of Ojai. I had a whole bunch of remarks prepared that I'm, that I threw out after listening to everybody speak before I did. As I was doing the break, somebody who I've known for a long time came up to me and said, "So glad you're here, save the day." I am well-known in this community as someone who is outspoken and is opposed to mo, to much development that serves only developers. There is no saving this, saving the day here. If we had a sane world, we would not be bombing Afghanistan and, and Iran and Iraq, and, and Russia wouldn't be bombing Ukraine, and we could spend endless amounts of money to make sure that we had housing for everyone, mental health services for everyone, et cetera. But we don't live in a sane world. The city has very limited powers with respect to housing, and a whole lot of other things, because there's the federal government, state government, the county government, all limiting what we can do. In addition, previous councils made commitments that can't simply be undone. I don't know what Mr. Summers has advised you, and he's not going to tell us anyway what your chances are at litigation, but litigation is generally a lose-lose, because you have to pay attorney's fees at, at the minimum. I, I, despite my anger at Ryan for his earlier remarks, I trust Ryan, he's devoted to the community. He spent seven or eight years leading the effort to get rid of Golden State for no personal gain whatsoever. I trust Bill Wyrick, he's one of the brightest folks I know. And, and you can't negotiate forever, Susa. You know, at some point, you got to say, "All right," because they're going to come back and say, "Well, if you want this, then we're going to take back this." It's time to say yes on this, and it's the best we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Len. Next, we have Linda Caldwell, then Ray Powers, then Michelle Panero.
As we'd say where I'm from, hi, y'all.
Howdy.
I've thought about this for a long time, and looked at all the, the pros and cons, and I really don't think that we'll get a better deal than this. And so I think it's time to accept this agreement, and I think that what the Becker Group is offering is very generous compared to what happens in a lot of other instances. The thing I most want to say is I want to challenge the people who have worked so hard to save these cottages to now get busy and help us build the housing we need in Ojai. And that's the only solution to affordable living here. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Linda. Next, we have Ray Powers, then Michelle Panero, and then Nick Weisman.
Hello, counsel, Ray Powers. I had actually put a card in for a public comment before the whole conversation tonight, but I'm not going to read that, I'll do that at another time. I want to thank Councilman Wyrick and Councilman Blatts. I want to thank the Becker, Becker Group representative for that PowerPoint. My perspective has changed. I'm more aligned with Lenny now. I'm certainly not anti-development, I'm, I'm for wise development. And there was a lot of information that was presented tonight that would have been really helpful two meetings ago, when there were a hundred and something people here, to understand about the trees, to understand a little bit more about the water and rain gardens, all that, to understand more about the entire thing. A lot of it's out of our control, and I need to, inside myself, be at peace with that and concede to that. There's a lot of state guidelines that are really wonky and dysfunctional, and there's no, it doesn't have equanimity. The income levels are ridiculous, but we have no control over that. The fact that if I'm living in a low-income, affordable house, and my income goes up, and then is reviewed, good for me, I'm making more, but I could be asked to leave and then try to find a moderate, but that has nothing to do with us, has nothing to do with the Becker Group or Mr. Becker. It's just kind of the way it is in, in our dysfunctional world. So I agree that this is the best we can do, and you've got, you, you, our ad hoc committee has done a great job. You always do due diligence, and I'm just glad I was educated tonight about a lot that I didn't know. And with that data a long time ago, I would add more clarity, and maybe the whole community would, and there would have been more peace here.
Thank you, Ray. Next, we have Michelle Panero, then Nick Weisman, and then Lynn Francis.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Sticks, I'm sure it does not escape anyone that we are about to elect a new majority in city council. We don't know who it will be, I hope it will be me up here, but I'm here tonight because what is before the council is the biggest development in a decade, possibly more, and it's happening in the middle of an election, where four out of the five seats are up for election. In the name of good governance and in the name of fairness, this project should stand the scrutiny of the new city council. I believe the Becker Group to be people of goodwill, and as such, should allow the new council, who will be elected by a majority of voters, to be the ones to look it over. Maybe there are some good ideas here, and if there are, the new city council will get to approve them. The new council will be sworn in early December and can review this then in detail, meet with the public, and make an informed decision in January. This seems like a disservice to the community when the people haven't had a chance to review all the pertinent information, and it erodes the trust of city government to run this through a special meeting just weeks before the November 8th election. Land use planning driven by threat of litigation is not a good approach. I believe in democracy. The people, the community, should decide this. In the interest of credibility and fairness to this community, which you serve, and may have the opportunity to continue to serve, allow the new council to review this and make their decision in January with how to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next, we have Nick Weisman, then Lynn Francis, and then Jules Weisman.
Thank you all so much for the hard work on this. I can tell that a lot went to it, and I know you care so deeply about it. I had a lot more to say, but I'll just keep it short, just because I know that, you know, there's a lot of people that want to speak. But, you know, this is a, a community largely made up of seniors that are truly very low-income. There, at least half of the households there are very low-income. So when you come up with this proposal that has one very low-income home, and then, let's say, only a year for them to move out, or, let's say, $12,000 to $20,000 to go somewhere else, you're effectively telling people, "It's time to leave this town. You're not going to have a place to live." And that is heartbreaking, coming from somebody that I've been, I've had to move from a place because I couldn't afford it anymore. And I came here, and I could afford this. And so it is a disservice to the senior community there if you don't do more for them. This is very close, but you can do a bit more, and I think you can push it over the line. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Lynn Francis, then Jules Weisman, and then Bill Miley.
Hi, council, mayor. My name is Lynn Francis-Jane. I've been in Ojai about 45 years. I almost could just let his statement stand, except that I will say that I came here not knowing a whole lot about the, about the project. And I really appreciate the level of information that was shared from everybody who spoke today. Thank you for the city attorney, and thank you to the Becker Group. And I get it, I mean, I get it that we have set things in motion that you can't go backwards, the fact that we have subdivided already, you know, the cottages means that there are no rent protections for those people. And I think it's really important for everybody who is going to comment about that to recognize that single-family homes within any place in California have no rent protections, if they're on their own parcel. So the fact that the city already let them subdivide that land means that we already took away the protections for those people. So if we can do anything to protect those people, I'm supporting of it. I agree with the fact that, and I see the fact that we don't, my big concern about this project is the distribution of, of affordable housing. It feels to me like the, it looks to me, I looked, I looked at the numbers, what is the median income in California, right? And, and the, the moderate homes require more than the median income to afford. So I think that it's, it's unrealistic. I think the naming of them is unrealistic, it's unfortunate. And I think, I would love to see if there was any possibility that we move some of those, some of those units into a truly affordable category.
Thank you, Lynn. Next, we have Jules Weisman, then Bill Miley, and then Judy Murphy.
Hi. Mr. Blatts, I do believe you've tried your best on this, except there's one detail that persists that is driving me crazy. At the September council meeting, James Vega, in his presentation to the city, said, "In 2020, as part of all these discussions, the city received information from the owner of the property that indicated that seven of the eight existing units were occupied by a person who would qualify as a person of moderate income level of affordable housing. The eighth unit was inhabited by a person that would qualify as a low-income level of affordable housing. None of the units were deed restricted, we understand that, but they're occupied by people that would have qualified for affordable housing." So Becker told the city that seven tenants at the cottages among the flowers make enough to afford $2,900 a month in rent, and no one from the city or the ad hoc asked him to prove that or ask for an income survey. asked him to prove that or ask for an income survey, and then you guys built a deal around it? At the July Planning Commission meeting, Vega went further to say that, yep, there's only one low-income tenant and absolutely no very low-income tenants at either the cottages or at Mallory Way. He was asked by one of the commissioners. Over and over again, I come to these meetings and hear this falsehood repeated in the record. Tonight, I bring evidence that Becker misrepresented his tenants' incomes to the city. I have twelve statements, seven from tenants at the cottages, and five from Mallory confirming they make nowhere near ninety-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and I've sent you eleven of those, I got a bonus one before I came. I understand that the city doesn't wanna get sued and that you wanna start chipping into your housing goals, but please be honest in your own record about the tenants who will be affected. Otherwise, next time a project comes before Council, will the developer be allowed to go in and give any info he pleases without proof? Oh, no low-income tenants here, I guess I don't need to provide any replacement housing for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jules. Next, we have Bill Miley, then Judy Murphy, and then Anita Cram.
Good evening, Bill Miley. Since the facts should be key to the approval, here are some of my summary of the facts. Water, because he just provides it, he allocated. Becker Group already has water allocations. Twenty-five Mallory, eight cottage, ten World University for offices. Historical buildings. Years ago, historical preservation in 2009, they did a preservation report, they accepted it, they did not suggest that these be landmarked, and no City Council in the past has landmarked these properties. Environmental review, they've been done. It was mitigation of negative declarations. The four elements of this proposal were found to be exempt of SEQA. More income housing units are needed? Definitely. We need more low. In the 2021-29 City Housing Element, it shows a chart, there are over a thousand resident households which are renters in this city that are rent burdened, a thousand, not twenty-seven, a thousand. This four-part project is all private, there's no state or federal money. I cut out most of this stuff. In my strong opinion, it meets all city ordinances' policies and general plans. There has been no deeded affordable units created in our city since, these are rental ones, 1978. That's forty-four years ago. Some folks think, oh, ADUs are the solution. They are not deeded, and there's no guarantee they're gonna be affordable. Please approve this tonight, now. You've been working on it for a long time, don't push it away. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Judy Murphy, then Anita Cram, and then Nick Otway.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. I want to congratulate you. What a job you've been through for the last more than two years to arrive at this conclusion. You've made a better number of affordable housing out of it, you've made better phasing, you've improved the relocation. I learned a lot tonight, I thank the Becker Group for a good presentation and to our staff for a good presentation. I've been working on affordable housing for several years, and I have to say, I learned a few things tonight. I hope you can all find your way to yes. One other thing, I don't think it's a good idea to put off the decision on this to another Council. Come on, the city's been working on this for fifteen years. Make a decision. Please let it be yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next, we have Anita Cram, then Nick Otway, and then Jeff Starkweather.
So, I do want to thank everyone for their work. I think they have worked in good conscience, but let me point out some facts. Let's talk facts. Clarify, the cottages among the flowers were built in 1929 as affordable rental housing. Since 1929, let's clear that up right now, by a benevolent developer named John Burnham. We have a street named after him. So, that is a fact. You can find that in the documented 2006 historical review by, I think, at San Bernab, whatever, the firm in Santa Paul that did it. There is a concern within the community that this proposed development is in conflict with the city's housing element, and that is because the city housing element prioritizes low-income and people of special needs. That's exactly who is living in these units. You have limit, you have another, there was a table put up by Ms. Collins here that showed income levels and all of that, but there's also another table that shows goals for 21, 2021 to 2029, low-income, zero met. Very low-income, zero met. Extremely low-income, zero met. Moderate income, seventy proposed, seventy done. This is gonna add another twenty. Most of us do not see moderate-income-level housing as affordable, so our definitions of affordable are completely different. And by the way, I already have low-flow toilet in my unit. I already have shower head, that's a no-brainer, to put a low-flow shower head. These are like cosmetic in actuality. They mean nothing as far as water-saving. And also, you know, the six-and-one, it does not replace what we're losing. These people are low-income, come on, get on our planet. And I appreciate your work, I really do, I think you're working in good intent, but look, you know, you could've put us in this negotiation from the beginning. We could've had this back and forth a long time ago. The community could've been involved at a level that we wouldn't be at this place right now. Anyway, I could say more, but you already know it. Oh, the SEQA exemption, is that illegal? The one, I sent emails about it, you know, the one for Historical Resources that has false information in the document, that seems illegal.
Thank you, Anita. Next, we have Nick Otway, then Jeff Starkweather, and then Deb Murphy.
Nick Otway, thank you. I urge you to get going with this development project. It's a beginning. It's like when you've got a backyard and you have a heap over here that you've been wanting to clean up, and you heap over here and you've wanted to clean up, and at least you can get one of them out of here and start doing some housing for people who need it. I think the word affordable was dealt with as good as we could, but it needs refining as to exactly who needs this affordable housing. Thank you. Get going.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Jeff Starkweather, then Deb Murphy, and then Dee Reed.
Should we follow along or quickly read it?
Before I start, before my time starts, I just wanna say I'm a member of the Planning Commission. What, well, thanks, appreciate that. Folks oppose the development, folks who oppose the development agreement have consistently opposed any affordable housing in Ojai, using climate crisis, environmental risks, and threats of quality of life as their reasons. But these local anti-housing advocates are completely at odds on the issues with major environmental groups, like the Sierra Club, like the Green Belt Alliance, and key climate action groups such as the Cool Climate Network. The Cool Climate Network found that urban infill housing is the greatest opportunity to reduce greenhouse gases, making low-impact infill housing the lowest-hanging fruit. The Sierra Club has defined infill development, which they support, as new homes, jobs, services, existing in urban and suburban communities, and small towns. By enabling people to live closer to jobs and services, infill development reduces and driving and greenhouse gas emissions by as much as up to ten to forty percent, while providing other quality-of-life and economic benefits. I can't even see the time here. So, my point is, this is the kind of development that we wanna have if we're doing climate change, and I would add two things. One, this is related to our losing of students, and secondly, our biggest greenhouse gas that we have in the Ojai Valley is commuting in and out of the Ojai Valley, and this kind of housing will help reduce that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Deb Murphy, and then Dee Reed, and then Rachel Lang.
Good evening, Council members, Mayor, and people of Ojai. I love this town, I've lived and worked here most of my life. These changes, I have been trying to follow them, they are happening way too fast. We are ramming this through. Suzie is sitting here, I see so much distress on her face, she's trying to just comprehend what's going on. It's too fast. I feel also very, very distressed that if allowed to go forward, the proposed project is gonna destroy oak trees. Replacing this is the Heritage Oaks circumference. I walked out of my place at the cottages this evening, I wouldn't be able to fit this around my trees, four of them right next to my place. Replacing trees with trees half the size, that if they don't do it, they just have to put them somewhere else or have the city, just pay the city off. This is a money thing. This is so wrong, it is a travesty. And I have another point, which is I feel very uncomfortable with the fact that mayoral candidate, Anson Williams, has accepted campaign funds from Jeff Becker, head of these development groups that are proposing these highly controversial projects. I have a problem with that. I also don't understand why on the eve of an election where four of the five council seats, like she said already, Michelle said already, are up for reelection, four distinctly different development projects are being rolled into one binding agreement that cannot be changed by future city councils for ten years. These changes, like I said, are being rushed on us. We can't, we don't have time to review at all the changes that have happened in the last month, respectfully, so I'm... Would it not be more democratic for the city to start over with a new environmental review and financial analysis that duly considers present circumstances around human-caused, climate-driven aridification, water supply constraints, loss of trees, and substantial increases? Please vote no.
Thank you, Deb. Next, we have Dee Reed. Next, we have Dee Reed, then Rachel Lang, then Tom Francis.
Sorry, Deb, but I gotta disagree, that I think things have been going a little too slow, not too fast. Look, we can't keep calling Ojai Shangri-La, can we? If we keep turning our backs on the significant housing needs of the working people who make this a special place. We know who they are. They cook our food, they make our restaurants shine, they nurture our landscapes, they teach our children, they mend our broken bones, and yes, they save us from the wildfires. They deserve to live here, too, but many of them can't. Some of them can't afford even the affordable low-income housing that's never been available, and then some of them can't even find middle-class housing for people who work for a living inside the town limits of Ojai. To me, that's a disgrace, for a town like Ojai to have so little to offer people who work here. This development agreement is not perfect, but it's unique and unprecedented in several ways, and it gives me hope, hope, that it is no longer a dirty word to say, "housing" at a City Council meeting. You might get booed, but you're allowed to say it now. So, the bottom line for me is, I do care about the tenants, and the truth is, the tenants are going to be leaving that property one way or the other. If Becker doesn't develop it, it'll get flipped and somebody else will, and they won't give as many benefits and as positive a timeline as you have with the project. So, they're better off with the development agreement than without it. So, I hope you will vote for the development agreement. I think it's a, it doesn't do enough, but it's an important down payment on what I see as a moral obligation and a moral hazard if we don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. Next, we have Rachel Lang, then Tom Francis, then Sabrina Venskas.
Hello, Council, hello, Mayor, thank you. I first wanna just acknowledge that I really appreciate what this Council has done to negotiate this deal so far. I understand this is a very difficult situation that you're in. My concern is that the relocation packages that are being offered to the current residents of the cottages among the flowers and the Mallory Way bungalows will fall short in meeting their needs. Most of these families will have a difficult, if not impossible, time finding homes they can afford in the Ojai Valley in the long term. And furthermore, there aren't as many low, there aren't as many low-income or affordable houses as there are residents in need of them in the cottages. So, that's one of my concerns, and so I stand in support and solidarity of those who really are the most vulnerable in our community. Another challenge that I'm just going to propose is that the environmental impact reports, and I know you alluded to this, but that the reports are old and outdated, and climate change has accelerated, we have been in an extended drought, and so I would like to see some more water, I would like to see some more reports done and some more studies done on the viability of that. It's really unfortunate that litigation that we're doing, that we're, litigation has made this even more of a contentious issue, and so I really understand and respect the position that you're in, but I ask that we prioritize the care of the people who are most at risk for losing this home if this project goes through as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next, we have Tom Francis, then Sabrina Venskas, then Mierto Kay.
Good evening, Mayor Styx and Council. I wanna start by thanking you for your service to our community. I do appreciate all you guys working so hard. First, I'm gonna speak on behalf of a local nonprofit organization called Simply Ojai. Simply Ojai requests that the Council deny this proposed development agreement due to the fact that more than half of the proposed units are planned to be market-rate and therefore are likely to only serve those that are wealthy. Due to state mandates, all accessory dwelling units that are being permitted and built in Ojai are market-rate and being constructed at a rate that is on pace to meet our regional housing needs assessment requirements for market-rate units. In addition, the city has allowed the opportunity for twenty tiny home pads to be constructed in our city, and per Council majority direction are also allowed to command market-rate rents. Simply Ojai also incorporates by reference those written and verbal comments urging a no vote on the proposed development agreement before you today. So, that completes my comments on behalf of Simply Ojai. Now, I'm gonna speak on behalf of myself, Tom Francis, as an individual. I just wanna say I hereby incorporate into my comments those other written and verbal comments that oppose the proposed development agreement, including those from Simply Ojai. And then I also just have one more comment to make, and then I'll wrap it up, and that is that I think that sometimes with some members of the Council, there's this assertion that there is division in our community, and I think you guys are confusing dissent with division. This is dissent. We don't agree with you, but we're not divided from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have Sabrina Venskas, then Mierto Kay, and then Paul Magulis.
Hi, Ryan, I still love you, and I'm sorry that I offended you with my email. I wanted to just mention that the context in which we are talking today is the context of blackmail. We have a developer that if he was to develop under the 2013 ordinance, would be required to do a one-to-one affordability development. And I would be happy to read to you the ordinance into the record, but I don't have enough time, and you would see that the 2013 ordinance would get us what we want, but because we have a blackmailer here who's saying that he's gonna try to sue so he doesn't have to meet... doesn't have to meet the 2000, or come within the 2013 ordinance, we're in this position. Now, I think that one thing that this council should have is the developer's pro forma. Other cities do that before entering into a contract that gives the developer 10 years certainty to being able to freeze the laws in place today, but we don't have any pro forma. I asked city staff, can I see the developer's projections? There are none. So I had my own affordable housing consultant, affordable housing developers that I go to when I'm doing other kinds of cases, and they had to, they had to rely on certain kinds of assumptions. But the assumptions, including the purchase prices that I'll, I'll talk to you about in one second, they came up with a, a net profit of between $5 and $10 million that this developer will get if this development agreement is approved. Now, if that's the case, and again, I don't have all the numbers because we didn't, we don't have a pro forma, if that's the case, is this the best we can do? Because we are losing five affordable units with this deal. We're losing five. We are at a net loss of five units. Now, this guy bought the Mallory Way, please give me like just 15 more seconds. He bought the Mallory Way property for $894,000. $894,000 he bought Mallory Way. That's 25 units. That is cheap. He's going to make a lot of money off this property. What can't we do better? Can't we get at zero, zero, instead of a net loss of five? And those Mallory Way units are all protected under the Tenant Protection Act now. None of those people can be evicted.
I think 15 seconds is up.
Thank you, Sabrina.
Thank you.
I'll move to allow Sabrina to continue. I don't mind.
I second that move.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ryan. Just, I really appreciate it. Two more, not two more minutes, two more, three more seconds. Those units are protected under the Tenant Protection Act. The rent can only go up between 5% to 10% a year, and those, those tenants cannot be evicted unless there's substantial renovations. But if there's substantial renovations, those tenants and those units are still protected under the Tenant Protection Act. They still get protection. It's not until you give a certificate, certificate of occupancy, a new certificate of occupancy, that it takes it out of the protections of the Tenant Protection Act. So if all they do is a substantial renovation, it's still protected under the Tenant Protection Act, and those tenants can't be evicted. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Next, we have Mirta Kay, then Paul Magulis, and then Chloe Huggins.
Dear mayor and city council members, I appreciate all that you do for our community. Your job is indeed so hard. So, before casting your vote tonight, I'm asking you to please remember that there are a lot of vulnerable people living in Aliso and Mallory Way, a lot of them. And these people need you to stand for them. So all I'm asking and urging you is to be compassionate and let compassion be your guide tonight before anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mirta. Next, we have Paul Magulis, then Chloe Huggins, and then Joe McDonald.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the great work you're doing. So, the cottages and Mallory Way are 33 units, right? And these are low-income housing right now. Yep. Which means, we're going to be left with seven low-income housing. Which leaves 26 people or families who are going to go where?
Who are what?
Going to go where?
Going to go away.
Yeah.
Go where?
Go where? Yes, 26. Yeah, that's the question. Okay. Can we do better? Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we have Chloe Huggins, then Joe McDonald, and then Sarah Yates-Mora. Chloe here?
I can't believe I saw you.
Okay. Joe McDonald?
Hello, city council. Thanks for everything you do. This is the third time I've been to the city council meetings to oppose this development. Each time, the overwhelming majority of the people that live there in the cottages are asking you to not, deny this project. And I would hope you could please listen to the people you represent and deny this project today. Here are a few reasons you should stop this development. You can stop it for environmental reasons. You can stop it to preserve the quintessential Ojai historical buildings. You can stop it to prevent the mayhem that the construction will bring to the neighborhood, you know, cutting that road through to Kenyatta and such. You can stop it to help prevent depletion of our water supply. And most importantly, you should stop it so that the families, our neighbors who live in these communities are not displaced. There are solutions which will preserve these communities, and the first step is to prevent their destruction. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Joe. Next, we have Sarah Yates-Mora, then Deborah Kirkland, and then Heidi Whitman. Sarah here? Deborah Kirkland?
Thank you so much for this time. My name's Deborah Kirkland. I lived in the valley for 25 years or so now. I wanted to point out that the exemptions that are proposed for this project from SEQA don't really stand because there's exceptions to those exemptions. One of which is the location, if the location in our valley is unique, it's not a standard infill lot situation where greenhouse gases will be reduced because we only have four ways in and out of the valley. And we also have a very limited water supply. And so that, that's what makes the location of this project fall under the exception to the exemption. Also, the cumulative impact. If you approve this project without any SEQA analysis to the human environment in our valley, that will create a precedent for future development to say, hey, you approved this four aspect development without any SEQA review. So yeah, you should approve ours, too. So I think it's going to create that precedent and a cumulative impact. Significant effect, that's another exception to the exemptions. Categorical exemption shall not be used for an activity where there is reasonable possibility that the activity will have a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances. I think a prolonged drought could be considered an unusual circumstance, and our limited water supply that we're right now in litigation about to maintain. I think that's significant, don't you? Let's go ahead and do a SEQA analysis. Maybe we can approve the, the development agreement on the condition that the developers will perform that SEQA analysis so that the valley can be assured that their water, air, and traffic impacts won't be a detriment to all of us, that we'll be paying the price long into the future. The mitigated negative declaration, 2009, our, our land is a lot different than 2009. I think the environment that that analysis was based on is significantly different today, right? I, I think that's reasonable. Anybody would, would say that. So I think I did a market analysis, and in Ojai right now, today, there are 25 units for rent. The average rent is $4,000 per bedroom, per bedroom. And so I think that the market rate units are going to create substantial income that would justify paying for an environmental analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next, we have Heidi Whitman, then Gail Matica, and then Barbara Bowman.
Good evening, Mayor Sticks and member of the council. My name's Heidi Whitman, and I live in the city of Ojai. I am opposed to the development agreement because, as proposed, it's a net loss of affordable housing. This isn't an infill project, as some people have suggested. It's not a 40% affordable project, as others have suggested. This is a discretionary development permit, or we wouldn't be here tonight. They'd already have approval, they'd be on their merry way. So our general plan, as it's been pointed out by others, at a minimum, requires a one-for-one replacement. It's right here on page 64. You can read it for yourselves. I don't know why you're not requiring this. And frankly, I'm shocked that any proponent of affordable housing in this community would let us get by with 40 new affordable, with 40 new market rate units where there isn't any percentage of them as affordable, and we actually have a net loss. And just in case nobody understands the math, we have 33 right now, 27 are proposed. And when I do the math, that's a loss of five. So really, as we all stand here and talk about affordable housing and how badly we need it, I'm, I'm kind of looking at how bad do we need it if our council isn't even requiring that we do better than neutral? So with that, I hope that you oppose this project tonight. We can do better.
Thank you, Heidi. Next, next we have Gail Matica, then Barbara Bowman, and then Leslie Rule.
Thanks for all you do. I know it's been a long haul. I would encourage everyone to pause and do what Ryan asked, which is to consider this project in detail. And I don't think that tonight's meeting was enough time for any of us to really digest all of this, and there's so many details and little snags here and there that we really need to consider. So I really encourage you to put this off at least for 30 days and give us all a lot of time to sit and really review all of this. There's just, it's so much, and you've all had 30 days to put it together. Feels only fair to me, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail. Next, we have Barbara Bowman, then Leslie Rule, then Carol Smith.
Barbara Bowman. 1978, that number sticks with me. 1978, we have not built any affordable units. And we have come before you again and again wanting to do affordable units, and every project has been shot down. And everybody that gets up and speaks gives you all these god-awful reasons why we shouldn't do it, and everybody leaves and they're voted down, and it never happens. All the people that are against it tonight, they'll all go home. They will either be evicted, the project won't be done, after 300,000 thrown away trying to get this done. How 15 years, four years of your time, another project not done, and another reason terrifying everybody why they shouldn't be done? It's ridiculous. Bill Miley has worked harder than anybody I know for this community for affordable housing. If this is shot down once again, everybody will go away until the next one comes up, and it will be shot down, and it will be shot down, and it will be shot down. Aren't you guys getting tired of this getting shot down? Coming up with reasons why it should be shot down? Reasons that don't make any sense? In this case, you're not protecting the tenants. Everybody that spoke here tonight, the tenants are not protected. You walk away from this project, and the tenants can be evicted. What protection is that for the tenants? Everybody's worried about them saying, "We can do better." No, we need to start doing something. Enough, enough, enough no. It's got to be yes. Finally, yes for affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next, we have Leslie Rule, then Carol Smith.
Good evening, council. Mayor Sticks. I just want to reiterate, as having been a tenant and having been a landlord, these tenants will get evicted, and they will have no pathway to a place. And if you don't think that's the case, then you don't know landlords. And, and that's just a fact of the matter. So you can look at it however you want to look at it, but in the end, and not only that, as one who has been through this, they will spend the next years in stress over this. It will not be a pleasant situation, I promise you. I just know that. So, you know, as much as we say, this is the best, I think, that we're going to be able to do, and those tenants deserve as much protection as we've been able to get them, and I don't think we will get more. And then, on another note, I just want to give you some housing bills that have passed this year. So things will be changing. SB 649, SB 971, AB 2097, removing parking requirements. To address challenges tenants face in finding low-cost housing, SB 6, AB 211. So, and it goes on, and it goes on, and it goes on. It's now time for us to come into the 21st century and start working with some of these problems and, and housing issues. AB 1551, AB 2097, AB 2295, AB 1837, AB 2244. And it goes on and on and on, and that is this year's housing regulations. And finally, one point that did come up, I do agree that all stakeholders should have been involved in this process. And I, I think that that's one of the things in my platform anyway, is that this starts at the bottom, and it starts at the beginning, and everyone is involved. And finally, I have a question for the attorney. We talk about affordable housing, we talk about ceiling. Is it possible for a local government to say, "We're actually going to drop that amount so that, you know, affordable housing theoretically, $75,000, but we're going to make it $40,000 and still be within the law?" Just curious. I don't know.
Seeing the looks of questions from the council, through the council and mayor, the city can move the units to a lower level. We can't rewrite the state income limits, but we can click it from very low to extremely low, or from moderate to low.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. Next, we have Carol Smith.
Good evening, council. My name's Carol Smith. I served on this body for 12 years and was a mayor for three times. What brought me over, I was listening at home, and then I think it was before Ms. Panero saying, "Let it go to another council." Well, this issue has been going to five councils, six councils. It's time to make a decision, and the decision should be yes. I think the Becker Group has gone over backwards in meeting our requests. Somebody asked earlier on TV what the Becker Group does. They're property managers, mostly. There's tons of signs all over Ventura that says, "Managed by the Becker Group, managed by the Becker Group, Becker Group." So basically, they are both a building and a management company, and they're very big. What we really need in our town is workforce housing. We have workers who crowd up our route, our roads, going back and forth from Oxnard, who work in our hotels, who work in our restaurants. They have kids who don't go to Ojai Unified because they cannot afford to live here. Our school district is down 173 children from 2017. Every child we lose is a loss to the district of $20,000. That's just not classroom instruction. That's maintenance workers, that's school bus drivers, that's clerks, secretaries, everyone involved. $20,000 they are going to lose. Their budget is, that's $3,600,000 we've lost to our school district. What's is that? That keeps happening because no kids live here. The only kids, you know, it's just, it's, it's horrible what could happen to our town. We are going to become nothing but old retirees who bought their house 30 years ago. And then we'll become very rich families who can afford the $2 million houses and send their kids to Ojai Valley School. That's terrible. Please let this project say yes. And Mayor Sticks, if you could stay, say yes, I would feel very good about it. You have $20,000 in campaign money, and I could guess who gave that to you. Please vote with the majority. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right. Next, we have any comments online? Robin?
If anybody on Zoom wants to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Yes, we do. We have six comments, and let me...
Can you turn your volume up, Robin?
Yeah, I can. Okay. Kathy? Kathy, can you hear us? Go ahead and unmute Kathy, if you're still on.
Are you talking to Kathy Lottis?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm, I'm here. Dear mayor, council members, and city staff, my name is Kathy Lottis, and I live in the city. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the development agreement. This project at its heart is a developer-driven agreement that is not in the interest of residents. As proposed, we've gone over this, only a few units, seven total, are below moderate income. The majority of the units, that is, the 16 market rate and moderate income, will not be affordable to many of our Ojai residents. be affordable to many of our Ojai residents, our teachers, our restaurant workers, and other service economy employees, our seniors, and many young adults. As referenced by Councilmember Francina, it is our very low income and extremely low income housing that is quickly disappearing, and yet that is what our housing element says is our most pressing need. This project does not sufficiently address the type of housing, the type of housing Ojai desperately needs. So if approved, the development agreement will grant the developer huge entitlements with an exceedingly generous ten-year timeframe without conferring equal benefits to the city and its residents. To be clear, we are talking about development permits that were approved more than the ten-plus years ago that have expired, that he cannot build without these permits being reinstated. We are approving development titles, entitlements, conferring very large dollar benefits on the developer without a current, careful, detailed review of what is being approved. The planning commission, of which I was a part of at the time, usually responsible for development review, did not review the cottages and Mallory Way development plans as a part of its review of the, of the development agreement. This is not the way to ensure that what gets built in the end is not a huge regret. It is not in the interest of Ojai to reactivate these permits without adequate updated review of the fine sighting, historical aspects, the environment, examination of project alternatives that might include evaluation of public-private partnerships, cumulative impacts, and consideration of current conditions and constraints. Thank you. I have a few more things to say, but thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Next, we have Julie Tumamit Stensley, followed by Steve Young and Ally. And Julie, I'm going to go ahead and...
And, and Robin, we, I missed, we have one card that didn't show up, so we have one more public speaker here, too.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we have you, Julie.
All right, thank you. Good evening. It's been a while since I've joined the city council. We had that three and a half years with the cultural resource resolution that was put together. Where this development project has been since 2007, that was way before we put that resolution together. But still, the Becker Group had, had done some archaeological assessment on the Mallory Way and cottages. A lot of people think that that's something that's going to stop these projects. There has not been one archaeological find or anything that has stopped any project in this county. So unfortunately, that's not something that, that we will be there. I'm hoping that Montgomery, and I heard it earlier, that there are still cultural resources on the table for South Montgomery. But that being said, I'm concerned about the trees. As we do assessments with the archaeological work, I'm finding the sloppy work of archaeological groups doing some of our assessments. I don't trust the arborists. I would love to see oaks being exchanged for oaks. The other plants out there are chaparral. You need to do mirror and compliment and put those oaks back into our community, into our valley here. We'll never see them grow to the status that some are here in our lifetime. So we, our roads are not safe because everybody's late, they're speeding, and it's gotten very dangerous. We need the low-income city has property. We need to start looking at doing these total affordable housing for people and families. We cannot lose our families. We've lost a lot. So we really need to think about this. We'll learn from this mistake. If you, well, I, sorry, I, we'll learn from our mistakes. Let me restate that. If this project goes through, and we can do better, we can do better. So I thank you for your, work that you're doing. Good evening.
Thank you, Julie. Robin, we have one more public speaker live here. Can we do that?
Okay, go ahead.
Andy Whitman.
Thank you, Andy Whitman. I am running for city, city council in District Three. So what I heard earlier is that if the community disagrees, we don't understand, and it was kind of yelled at us so we could really understand. But what I understand is that the most vulnerable residents for our community are not going to be able to afford to live in Ojai when this project is approved. That defies the definition of affordable. This should not be referred to as affordable project. Being first in line for a unit that you cannot afford is not providing relief. Approval means that you'll be ensuring that members of our community are lost to us. Ojai did adopt an ordinance to prevent what is happening with this project. That ordinance says that we must replace existing affordable housing that is low income with new affordable housing that is low income, and we're not doing that with this project. We're replacing low-income housing with moderate income that the residents of the housing cannot afford. So essentially, the project should lose all of the affordability, because it doesn't comply with our affordability law. So I want to just raise a couple of issues real quickly, and that is that a lot has changed since 2007, when there was an environmental review. We've had unprecedented drought. There's a lawsuit going on with Ventura right now in which the judge may order that we have to reduce extractions from the groundwater basin. And our community has become inundated since 2007 with a million visitors per year. Those are all environmental issues that should be reviewed. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right, we'll go back to Zoom now, Robin.
Okay, we have Steve Young, followed by Ally, followed by Catherine Donwin. And Steve, you are on.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
My name's Steve Young. My wife and I have lived in Ojai for twenty-six years. We live in the city. Our two children went to the public schools. We just feel we need more housing. I know this is a tough issue, and tough decisions are being made, and these have been tough negotiations. But overall, we feel like this project is, is a, a good deal for the community and a good deal for our citizens, given what's already there. If I understood this correctly, and maybe this could be addressed, it sounds like one of the reasons these cottages are affordable is because the developers haven't been raising the rent over the years because they were planning on developing them. And, and again, it was said there were no guarantees. So I, I think, you know, we need more housing here in Ojai. This seems like you've worked hard to get to a good deal, and so, you know, I would encourage you to approve it. One last thing I should say, I'm an estate planning lawyer, and so I'm here as, as a representative, as, as a citizen of Ojai. I do happen to work at the same law firm as, as Beth Collins, so you can take that into consideration and weigh my remarks, but I, I wanted to tell you that. But I'm here as a citizen of Ojai and hope you'll approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, we have Ally, just a first name. Ally, if you're on, can you unmute, please? It looks like we might have lost Ally. We'll come back to her in just a second. So we have Catherine Donwin.
Hi. Okay. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Catherine.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Yeah, hi. Thank you, everyone. And I just want to start by saying, I really appreciate all of the information that we've been provided with tonight and, and the work that's gone into this. But I will say, to be fair, a lot of, I think, the opinions presented come from a place of a lack of information. And I think if we, a lot of us, had received the details of the project from the get-go and had been more easily accessible, I think a lot of this, a lot of the time spent may have been avoided. I also appreciate the adjustments that were made from that first July meeting until now because that first proposal was alarming, frankly. And it's better now, but I am still concerned about some of the current residents and the units that we will be using, or losing, excuse me. So I just think that's something to take into consideration. Can we, I, I know that they've given us a lot more, but can we just get those five more units at a low or very low rate? I think that would be really important and would do a lot to, you know, restore faith back into the community. And I hope that's something that can be considered because we just can't, you know, people can't afford to lose their homes. That's what we're talking about, people's homes. So those families and individuals need to be taken into consideration, and I hope we can consider them as human people that need places that they can afford to live. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, we'll check back with Ally. Ally, can you unmute if you can hear us? Okay, we're going to jump down to Craig Walker, followed by Steve Colome and Anita Hendricks. Craig, can you unmute, please?
I think I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just find it hard to believe that you have two extremely historic properties in Ojai, the Old Valley Outpost Lodge and the Cottages Among the Flowers, that have really helped to shape and define the character of Ojai for all these years. And part of their historic significance is the fact that they have been Ojai's low-income housing all these years and still remain in that capacity. But now, all that's going to change, and the buildings will change as well. And I want to address what the woman earlier, who was trying to get this out as she was, as she sat down, about the notice of exemption and the false information in it. Because in the, in the notice of exemption, which is what you base your whole CEQA exemption on, it says about the cottages among the flowers, "The project applicant intends to keep the exterior of the eight dwelling units to be renovated unchanged for the most part, with the exception of some paint and any necessary minor repairs, but proposes to perform interior modifications and renovations to the existing structures. The minor external improvements would not change the integrity of the buildings. In fact, they would enhance the integrity." And this is blatantly false. If we look at the, the conclusion of the, of the professional independent historic consultant that wrote the report, they wrote, "The large additions built on the highly visible elevations radically alter the historic form and, in some cases, remove character-defining features. The roof changes are also significant. The original design of complex and compact roof lines was intended to produce an architectural reality which is naturally diminished with the proposed new larger and more measured roof forms." So I think that you really need to go back and look at your notice of exemption, which is your legal document on which you base this whole CEQA exemption, because I think the information you have in there is false, and it does a disservice to the public, because the lawyer said, "Oh, it's not going to reduce their..." Well, eighteen of the units are going to be demolished and pictures taken. So people will say, "What happened to the old Ojai? Oh, it's in a photo album in the museum shelf." You know, that's, that's what's happening here.
Thank you, Craig.
So I really wish that some effort could have been made to work into the, to the agreement that these, these properties would be landmarked and would remain the low income instead of making them the market rate. I'm sorry I went over. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Next, we have Steve Colome. Steve, if you're muted, could you please unmute?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't have that button available to me. I remind, I want to remind you that one month ago, this DA was DOA. A considerable amount of material has been presented tonight, but there really is little time to digest the new material presented. And since my name was invoked earlier, I want to make it clear that I never accused negotiators, Bill or Ryan, in a leaked email of evil intent. My concern was and is over the DA mechanism and what, to the general public, is non-transparent negotiation. This mechanism is somewhat of an odd duck, and I suspect that there may be no other example in California of a development agreement with multiple parcels for a few dozen housing units. The major financial benefits for this project are conferred on the developer. What the city receives in return would not nudge the dial on our real housing needs and the type of housing needed to begin satisfying those needs. The agreement only provides a handful of units for very, for low-income residents and a single unit for a person of very low income. A requirement generally for development agreements is that, that public good be clear and that public acceptance must accompany any development agreement. And frankly, this project has not yet gained public understanding and acceptance. So I encourage you not to move forward in haste with new material on important undigested materials and reevaluate this project through the normal planning process. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Next, we have Anita Hendricks. Anita, are you there? Okay, I am not seeing Anita. Anita, I see you're unmuted. Can you hear us? Okay, well, let's jump down because Ally has come back, and we will come back to Anita. Ally Wilson?
I'm here. Do you want me or Ally to speak?
I would like, oh, is Anita there now? Okay.
Anita is here.
Okay, Anita, why don't you go ahead, and we'll have Ally go after you.
Okay. I can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
You can't hear me? Can you not hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right.
Anita, you can speak. We can hear you.
Do you want me to go ahead?
Anita?
Okay, please start, please start, please start the clock again. All right. I'm going to start, but the clock, please give me an extra, okay, give me an extra thirty seconds.
Go ahead, Anita.
Okay. Ojai is a jewel. The cottage is amongst the flowers. The cottage, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Anita, Anita, we can hear you, and your time is ticking. I'd suggest talking. Uh, I'd suggest talking.
Okay, half the time is up now, I'm just going to start talking.
We've met the obligations of Baron Council. Finished the minute and then she can submit a comment or writing.
Yeah, okay. Thank you Anita.
This is really, this is not fair for some reason, I cannot... Oh boy.
Okay, Anita, we, it's, it's not...
There's a lag, there's a lag between when I speak and when you guys...
Okay, uh, can you send us a letter?
Okay, yeah, Anita, send us a public, send us a letter and we'll publish it. Robin, can you move on to the next person?
Yes, I will.
Okay, we're going to go to Leslie Lesko, excuse me, Brandon. Lesko, if you're muted, could you please unmute now?
Yeah, Robin, I think that that's a, not a valid speaker.
That's what I heard, I don't know.
Uh, anyone else, Robin? Let's give Ally Wilson one more try. Because she is here with her hand up. Ally, if you're muted, could you please unmute?
Hi.
Hey, we got you, okay, you're on.
Hello? Okay, okay, good, hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Ally Wilson. I am born and raised sixth generation Ojai and I care about our town deeply. Tonight, I want to express disappointment to the current council members who have held this project up. It is completely unacceptable. Also disappointment in my fellow community members fighting to stop this proposed project. This project should have been approved years ago and saying no tonight achieves nothing for the community. Saying no tonight does not serve the community members seeking affordable housing and it does not serve the property owners who should be commended on the above and beyond relocation plan that is proposed. I'm concerned with the position the council has now put the community in with a potential lawsuit staring you, us, in the face. A completely self-induced lawsuit, might I add. This project will not make or break the housing shortage, but it will make or break the faith we, community members instill in a council that is willing to gamble the city budget on a hefty lawsuit that you are very likely to lose should you vote no. Approve this project tonight and serve the best interests of the people, which as painful as it might be for a few of you, does include property owners and investors. This project is literally a gift to, to the council and to the people of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you Ally. Anyone else, Robin? We have one more speaker, Aubrey, no last name. Aubrey, you can go ahead and speak.
Hi, yeah, thank you, sorry, I'm a little under the weather, so I apologize for my voice. Um, I'm third-generation Ojai. Um, and I think the cottages Among the Flowers and Mallory Way cottages and the whole environment there is so special. It is Ojai, the people who live there are Ojai. And we can't kick them out, the development proposal. I understand you guys have all been working on it very hard and I appreciate how difficult it's been, I really do. But kicking these people out of their homes and what's been offered by the Becker Group, who's going to make a killing on this, um, I just feel like we need to do better. We need to get more low-income housing guarantee for the people who can, for the poor to live there, you know, who can afford it, like. It's just all too expensive, it's just, yeah, we need more housing, we need more housing, but it's, we're building housing for rich people to move here. Like, why do we want to do that? To crowd our streets and pick our water and all this, like. I, I think we need to keep the specialness that we have and, and guard it and protect it. And I, I think the Becker Group threatening to sue us, you know, please just don't sue us, please just keep this as a special place. You, you have a ton of properties, a ton of developments, you want to do a lot more in Ojai. Like, we're going to really scrutinize that if you sue us, you know? It goes the other way too, so, like, I really hope that, that you guys vote no on this as proposed and that we continue to work on a solution to house these people. That's really what we need to do and to preserve the specialness of the environment, the space, the oaks, the trees, the trails, everything there. That is Ojai, that is Ojai.
Thank you. Is that it, Robin? We have Anita Hendricks is back. Let's see if she has a better connection here.
Robin, I think we already had called on her, so.
Okay. Okay, that's it, Robin? That is it, we have no more speakers in Zoom. Okay, thank you, Robin. All right, we will move on to council discussion.
Should I kick it off?
Is there going to be a rebuttal?
Rebuttal comments by the developers, Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and I'll be brief. I want to thank everyone. I'm not from Ojai, I think you all know that. But I'm really impressed by your community. Um, I'm impressed by the engagement and the dialogue and um, the one thing that is, is challenging is the misinformation. And that's been mentioned by a few others and I think that has its challenges and we, not just here tonight, but generally, I think we've been struggling with that um, as a society. There's a lot of misinformation about many topics and it just makes it harder to have a conversation. So um, what I've loved about this meeting is people seem to be trying to cut through the misinformation and get to what the facts are. The facts, as I see them, are that you actually have a magical moment here. You have these owners, these guys, willing to do this deal. Frankly, I'm, it's an unprecedented deal, as we've talked about. Um, it's unprecedented in my career and it's unprecedented in this city. They called me, what was it, about five weeks ago, uh, on this matter and told me the background. And frankly, I was astounded. There is, as, as has been discussed, there's a lot of history here. And it's kind of amazing that these guys made it to this point without a land use attorney. They, they probably wouldn't have gotten the deal. You all would not have extracted the deal that you did from those guys if I, if I had been involved, I, I do not think, um, to be honest. Sorry, I don't want to make you feel bad, Vim and Jeff, but uh, it's true. In 2019, when the city said that the 23, 2013 replacement requirements applied to the extensions of, extensions of both Mallory and the cottages, the, the city, in my opinion, my legal opinion, made a mistake. And uh, you know, not only were the entitlements of the cottages vested, meaning that they could have built out the cottages at market by right, but as one of the speakers mentioned, there have been a lot of new housing laws that have been enacted. And they usurp local control and they give more power to folks who are proposing development and they create all of these rules. Um, one of the rules, for example, is when you propose an extension for a housing permit, the, the city had 30 days to get back to the developer and tell them that the 2013 rules would apply. But the city didn't get back to them in 30 days and tell them that those 2013 rules would apply. And this is both to the extensions of Mallory and cottages. Instead, the planning commission actually approved the extensions and found it consistent with the general plan and zoning. It wasn't until later that there was the thought that in fact, we should apply those 2013 requirements. Maybe a brilliant plan, because then you got, brought these guys and the first thing I said to them was, "You all are way too nice." I mean, I honestly, that was my first reaction. Uh, I was dumbfounded. I could not believe they then entered into years of negotiations, sitting with you all and, and agreeing to what they agreed to. So the saddest thing to me about this meeting is that you all don't realize what a slamming deal you have, honestly. Um, and that the misinformation in the community has really eroded that. And that, that makes, that makes this whole thing unfortunate because I know, just having heard some of these speakers, that they're going to feel, walking out of here, if you get the DA and you approve the DA, some people will feel that Ojai lost. And that makes me sad because I think Ojai is coming out very well in this. And uh, so, that being said, um, you all, uh, Jeff and Vim have the patience, as, as my, my grandma would say, the patience of Jehovah. And honestly, you all and the ad hoc committee and staff, wow. Uh, the fact that you all have slogged through this for years and years and all these meetings, um, kudos. I hope that you can bring it home for your community. I hope that you can approve this tonight and see what's before you. And um, and we're here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you Beth. All right, we will move on to council discussion.
Alrighty.
You want to start, Susan?
Yes, we get two turns, right? I hope so, okay. So um, on a lighter side, this is probably my most monumental decision in my 10-year career on the Ojai City Council with two more years to go. And they don't call it a term for nothing, it's a, you know, it's a term. Can't get, you really cannot get out of it gracefully. You either have to move or die or get sick or something. You can't just, it's not like a job where, where you can just give notice. Well, you can, but you can't, I, I couldn't live with myself. So um, I, I have, I have some questions, okay? At this point, no matter how I decide, I'm going to be tormented and probably won't sleep for three days. Either way, either way. Because I have made a very concerted effort to look at everything from every possible perspective. Couple of things that I still haven't done and I regret, which is I haven't really walked the um, the Mallory Way, I call, I still call them the Mallory bungalows. I know there's a more legal term. And I haven't, I'm somewhat familiar with South Montgomery. So I have, those are, you know, some, some of the concerns. I'm kind of warming up to what I really want to say. I, I'm very tempted, I don't know if I'll do it, but I'm tempted to do what, what you did, Beth Collins, which is to ask for 30 days so that I can properly digest all the material before us. We've heard contradictory advice from, uh, you know, two other attorneys. And my question to the city attorney is, is it possible? I want to avoid litigation at all cost, okay? Is it possible, is there such a thing as going to a judge to look at all of this? And is there, I mean, are, are there other legal options that we may not be aware of?
It is possible to refer a dispute to a private judge, a mediator, uh, usually retired judges that aren't currently on the bench, who are retired from the bench and who work for mediation companies. The two parties could agree and submit it to a private judge. That context to be an arbitrator and accept the outcome of that. I have two immediate follow-up points. Number one, it would have to be by consent with both parties and I'm not sure that the developer would agree. I also frankly, I'm not sure I could recommend to the council also consenting that because the council is elected to make a decision.
Yes, yes.
And I would have to assess and research whether that's even legal in the land use context. So it's possible, pending further research, pending development agreement, and there's the answer.
Okay. So one of the things that I didn't understand, and I think I heard at least one or two of tenants under, state that they think that they have low income, is the word rent still, or some, low income? That they, that they're under some kind of low income. They pay, they pay low rent, but it was clearly explained tonight, and they may have missed it, that doesn't mean that they're officially in that category. They have no protection and the landlord or the property, developer, it's actually a developer slash landlord, right?
Right, so...
He can, he, I was, am I correct in here, that I heard that if he wanted to raise the rent tomorrow, he could?
Yes. The property owner can raise the rent of the current tenants at cottages of Mallory tomorrow in compliance with applicable state law, which sets a limit on how much that can go up, about 5% to 10% per year, with two caveats. Number one, current leases have to be looked at. Number two, there's an argument that may be applied as to cottages because it's subdivided into, into airspaces.
Yes, yes.
That the Tenant Protection Act doesn't apply. That's not for me to litigate, but the argument exists.
I understand that, yeah.
None of those units, none of those tenants have protection beyond the Tenant Protection Act, to the extent that it gives any protection.
Susan, can I just, and I, and I, and Matt jumped in here with me, but this is, this was a question I had too when we got into the, in our negotiations, because I was a little confused, even going in the last round. But if a tenant currently, it has nothing to do, their, their qualification, and by all means, correct me if I'm wrong about anything, but um, their current qualification is low, extremely low, moderately low, has nothing to do with the rent they're currently paying, but their income level. So once their income level is verified by a county, it was generally the county agency, then they would qualify for that. So whether it's low, median, moderate, or, we got median on here, we, very low, low or moderate. And then they are eligible for that same unit. If that unit's available, they're first in line to choose that unit. If that same level of affordability that they qualify for is not available, then they get a higher one, but the landlord pays the difference of that rent for a year. And then if there's no affordable units left, which isn't expected, then they get, that's where they get a whole year's worth of whatever they were paying rent before. And in all those situations, they get the $2,000 move away fee. So it's, you know, a lot of people were saying, hey, what are the current rents that they're paying? Well, the affordability isn't about what they're currently paying, it's about what they would qualify for and they're at least guaranteed a year of that same level, if not a, a full rental at that level. And if there's not one available, like, that they do, then they get a whole year's of their back rent paid forward to try and make it as easy as possible.
Yes, I understand that, I'm sure.
I didn't, so I wanted to...
I mean, I understand it now. I didn't really understand it until tonight, because logically, the people are paying low rent. And so, okay, so um, I got in my thoughts. I honestly can see, you know, if I made a chart of pros and cons on, on both sides. And in some ways, as Lenny said, there, I mean, this is like walking into a trap because of the threat. We would, we might make completely different decisions if it wasn't for the threat of being sued. And I want to speak to what that, what that means, okay? Both Beth and, I had a wonderful conversation with Mr. Becker yesterday, very cordial, and he answered a lot of questions and helped clarify this whole process from his perspective, which was very important to me. And they both say they don't want to sue, but um, you know, whatever decision we make tonight, in, at least in part or maybe completely, is due to the threat of, of, of being sued. And in our, in our society, suing is considered normal business practice. But let's be clear what a lawsuit really is for our community. There may be legitimate lawsuits and from a business point, point of view, I'm sure that it, it's, it's accepted, it's legal, it's, it's business. But a lawsuit is, in, in essence, a threat to steal from the city coffers. It's a threat to steal money that could be used for a year-round homeless shelter or emergency housing for displaced renters or all kinds of needed services, things that the community needs. or emergency housing for displaced renters or all kinds of needed services, things that the community needs. It's our money, right? That the, the community would be paying for this lawsuit. It would, it would, it would take away from our ability to repair our roads and all kinds of things that we wanna do. If, if I decide, and I'm, I am totally and honestly, completely undecided at this point. I have seen, heard people I deeply respect make arguments, and as they make the argument, I see the validity of it. If I were to move forward and, and, you know, go the route of approving this development agreement, I would simultaneously wanna make clear that I feel even, it's, okay, to clarify, that it sounds like the tenants can, you probably or likely live undisturbed for two years while this other, the two units in front, the units over the garage are being built, units that, that they can't, probably can't afford, but there are, and, and, and South, South Montgomery. All of that's going to happen?
That's the estimated timeline, yes. Construction on that area won't begin for two to four years.
So they, they have two years at their current residence, most likely. And maybe some of this can be spelled out after the rest of the, you know, let's see what we can do. My other condition would be that, and I discussed this with Jeff Becker, that he bring aboard Jan Scho, who is a very trusted arborist. I happen to trust the current arborist as well, but Jan is well-known in the community for, you know, for his work protecting the trees. He would never, you know, he, he, as, as we went around, the two arborists are compatible. It's like two doctors looking at a patient. We looked individually at every tree. I could see which ones were dead, which ones are required removal by the fire department, which ones are, will be saved and which one, you know. So I would feel better about this whole project, especially since I haven't, you know, really understood what, which trees are slated for the Mallory Way. I would feel much better if Jan Scho was on board, if we could make some kind of agreement.
The council can direct that the city staff hire Mr. Scho as, as the city's consulting arborist to develop a revised tree protection plan. We can't compel the developer to hire him, but the city can hire him.
The city can hire him?
Yes. We can't use our land use power to force hiring of a particular person, but the city can choose to hire someone and then require compliance with that revised plan.
Okay, if the council.
If the, obviously, everything takes two versions.
Makes that an condition of approval, okay. And you already answered my other concern, was that South Montgomery will go through the usual process through the planning commission. And it's not, it's not a given what's actually going to be there, right?
It would still be reviewed by the planning commission for design review.
Design review would be covened within the basic parameters set by the development agreement, number of units, things like that.
If I decide not to approve this agreement, it would be mostly, if not 100%, out of concern that even with the tenant, I had it right in front of me, the tenant relocation and protection, because, you know, it's, it's odd because we keep hearing that this is a great, this is great, you know? It's, and it's certainly better than many of us, including myself. We just left no, no move, you know, we were evicted by, by investors. Not by a developer in my case, but by an investor. My rent went from 1,650 to 4,000. After she did cosmetic improvements, I couldn't move back. That option was, so. And that's happening all over Ojai. It's not just me. It's happening everywhere. What was I gonna say now? Okay, yeah, so that's my concern. You know, I would, I would love to, I mean, I'm lost, I've lost my train of thought, so I will, I'm gonna pause and then I'm gonna gather my concerns about the relocation and assistance plan. Oh, and my other, my, my other commitment, that's aside from all this, that if we move forward, I really hope that we have a council that will commit to using, there's city property, there's land right adjacent on the, on the border of Mallory Way as it extends. There's land there, possibly we could do something there. I asked our, our city manager this morning and he said that we could, because ideally, and, you know, if we could get that done, that would help assure that none of these tenants end up living in their car. These tenants contribute to the community, they want to stay in Ojai. And my goal as their representative here is to protect them as best as I can. And I, I see a real dilemma. I see issues either way. There's issues either way. So I'm undecided and I'm all ears for what everyone else has to say.
Unless anyone else wants to step in. I was listening very, very carefully. The Councilman Francina, cuz I think we've developed a close working relationship over the years. I listen very carefully to what you say. And so I'm gonna say some things and we'll see where we go.
Yes, yes. We have mutual respect. We really do, yeah.
So, to me, it's important to frame this, again, as I, as I alluded to in my initial statement, about realistic achievement here, you know, what we can actually achieve. And many of the people opposing stated their sincere concerns and hope for better without a real defined path to better. You know, we don't, it's important that we try to bring together good intentions with good results. And if we don't discipline ourselves to really look at possibilities and the realistic constraints, then those become separated and that hurts the most vulnerable. I've always been concerned about, especially the cottages people, because that track map really undermines whatever even protection state law provides. And this development agreement provides much stronger protection. And as the city attorney mentioned, if there's a conflict between state protection or, and our development agreement protection we adopt, the stronger prevails.
Stronger prevails.
And so, I believe that it's important to keep in mind that the hope for better should be connected to a path to better. And right now, I believe that this development agreement drives resources into housing. It doesn't drive, and avoids driving resources into lawyers, arbitrators, and mediators. And I think, I wanna see all the resources possible going into protecting the tenants and building affordable units. It is not correct to state that there is any protection to the 33, you wanna, however you wanna count them. We've all heard why that protection isn't really there.
Yeah.
And so I just think that, and there's also another kind of, I think, an aspect that's something we need to deal with straight up. And that is that you can, affordable housing and well-designed infill and sustainable community design are all closely connected. And I heard some people casting dispersions or doubt about the whole, the whole matter of infill, but I have yet to see any sort of analysis, any sort of logical construct that shows the ability to achieve sustainability in a community without well-designed or appropriate infill. You can't live way apart from each other and have a sustainable community. You gotta live close to one another. So, I just would ask that we try to think of a way, and perhaps, like the stipulation you mentioned about the city committing to an arborist that we trust. I'm more than willing to think about that, but I just, I would hope we think of ways to find a way, if we have, and we add some stipulations to get to a path to better and not say no because we have a hope for better without a clear path to a better result. I, I just ask you to please think about that.
Yeah. May I respond? If anyone does, is, is it okay?
Sure.
Is it okay with my colleagues? I'm reminded of what Craig Walker said, that this is not just ordinary infill development. You know, when you use, I'm all for that, but I, I see this as a completely different category. This is, to me, this is historical property that was built to help the town to flourish. You know, this is where someone like Beatrice Wood would come to Ojai penniless and be able to live here. Now, when an artist comes to Ojai, there's no place for them to live. It's not like that anymore. I mean, they can live with friends, but they can't rent a little house on the east end anymore. You know, I've lived here almost, I don't know if I lived here, 65 years? So I've seen, I'm acutely aware of how much the town has changed. And if whatever, if I, if I do go for, I mean, I'm, I'm, I hear you when you say we need a path forward if we deny this development agreement. If I vote for it, it'll be because it's like there's a gun to my head. It is, I take very seriously the threat of a, of a lawsuit. It's not, because I, I do, you know, there's been so many things said that if you really listen, you can see it both ways. I mean, I can see it, but, I can see, you know, I, I mean, I wish, I wish we could pause and request, you know, I know it's become like an endurance contest at this point for all, for all of us here. Some of you are new, but many of us have sat here, you know, through all the meetings. And each meeting, I learn a little more in my awareness of, of the magnitude of, of these four projects. I mean, I really wish these were not bundled together. I really wish they were separated and that we could give each, judge each project on its own merit. You know, that's what I would much prefer. I'll, I'll be quiet now so I can.
Mayor Schick, could I comment on that point?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I'll be quick. I wanna reiterate, I think if you look at this analytically, if you look at it logically, the level of tenant protection and the level of affordable housing with the tenant protection can't be achieved one at a time. It's gotta be achieved together. That's really part of this challenge we face.
May I respond? Here's the truth. They could, it could be achieved. If, it could be achieved. If the developer wanted to achieve true affordability, he's in a position that he could do it. He has a right not to do it. But he is in a financial position and to, to do that if he wanted to. Let's just be honest and, and clear on that point, okay? It's, he's, he's totally within all his legal rights, but if he wanted to, to do it differently, he could. It would, it's his choice. Just like the lawsuit, as much as they don't wanna do it, it's still his choice. Okay.
Thank you, Susa. Randy?
I just have a couple comments, and then I'd like to make a closing comment. The, if this doesn't throw our, our cards on the table and expose us, talk me through 2013 and how we didn't respond to them. I know you weren't here, and I know Matt wasn't here, but what is on the record that they're quoting back to us that we did not do?
The record is the city approved it. You know, the city approved the extension and then again in 2016. And so, you know, that is, those are the facts that make this not so clear and make it hard for us to hold them to the standards and, you know, it's all that gray area that creates these, the, the need for compromise essentially.
Well, that's what, that's, that's what I, the conclusion I've come to is, I don't feel like I have a gun to my head regarding being sued. I believe that, and we, we've come across this, I know I've come across this in my eight years, I know Bill has too, that past planning officials and past councils have done things that just weren't right. And, and I'm sure that future councils will say, "This council did stuff that wasn't right." But, but that's where I am on this is, if, if we don't have to hold them to that standard, and that's what we're judging this DA over, then we really need to look hard at it and say, "What are the benefits to the community" versus going the other route? And everything that was laid out today just demonstrates that there's a win here. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying a huge, you don't see me jumping up and down with happy feet, but there's a win here. And, and then, and then there's a loss here. I wrote this down. Affordable housing defines us by a class of income. Isn't that sad? That we're sitting here tonight talking about people and about how much money they make or don't make? That's really sad. But that's where we are. That's where, that's where we are in this society of trying to get through it. But it's just, which, I, I remember in 1966, my grandfather died. And my grandmother, obviously, living, had never worked a day in her life, had never signed a check,
Wait a minute.
didn't drive a car, hear me out. And I, seriously, I was 16 years old at the time and I said to myself, "How's she gonna live?" Seriously. I mean, she didn't know squat about life, other than how to iron my grandfather's t-shirts and underwear. And, and it was sad. But that was the time then. And you know what? My grandmother lived to 94 because she lived in government housing. So there was a way for her to live and survive and travel and, and live with my Aunt Darla. So I, I get that. Where we are right now, we're in Ojai on an all-hands-on-deck. And you have to kinda look at that, to me, that's how I'm looking at this. What does this give us? It gives us housing units. It gives us housing units defined by income. And we need housing. We need housing for people that make 100,000. We need housing that make 50,000. We need housing for everybody. So, when I look at this here and I look at the agreement that's before us, it's gonna fit a niche. But we can't stop there. You know, I know the mayor's platform about home renting or home sharing. That's where we are. We need to look at that. We need to look at ADUs. We need to look at tiny homes. This is, we need to look at everything constructive and positive that's gonna help our community survive. And it doesn't have to be 500 units of this or 400 units of that. And I don't see that in this proposal. So, I'm gonna end it there, but I got a little more to say, but I'm just, just quickly. When I think of affordable housing, I go to my grandmother. And you go by the things that have impacted your life. And for the life of me, I don't know how she did it. And she couldn't have done it without that government assistance. And I think when this is said and done, this community needs to look at how we're gonna partner with that.
May I say something to Randy?
Thank you. First, I apologize if I, if it felt like I was yelling earlier. I just know that some people couldn't hear. I talk a little loud, so my apologies and this is, and it's obviously an emotional, passionate issue. And I, I do think tonight was refreshing in a way that there were a lot more people who came in and it seemed like had a, not a different opinion, but a clear understanding of what's going on. I appreciate that. So I, I wanna thank our community. So, I, I want to thank our community for that. It does seem like that's, that it's coming around because, like I said, I have no problem with people that disagree with me. I just want them to make sure they're coming off with a decision that's based on the right facts. I heard a number of things tonight. I won't go through them, I'm gonna reserve some time. I'll try and be quick on this, but I know people keep saying, "Why doesn't this go through the regular planning process?" Well, it did. It went through the regular planning process and got approved in 2007, and then it went through the planning process again to get renewed. It was an appeal that is outside of the normal planning process that brought us here. So, as much as everybody who, you know, doesn't like this, wants to demonize us, if we did not get in front of this freight train, it was gonna run through Ojai a long, long time ago, and it was gonna do it again because there were a bunch of people asleep at the wheel. This is our attempt to try and make this right. Just want to remind everybody of that again. To Mr. Whitman's comments, I, I appreciate his work on the water case. Again, I'm sorry for, if he perceived that as yelling, but the first-in-line idea is first-in-line. We are expecting there to be sufficient units and turnover to allow everyone who is, qualifies for affordable, not everybody who's in these units. They might be low cost, but they actually make more money than would be affordable because there's no restrictions on it right now. We know that exists in some of the units. So, all, there, there is designed in this to all be first-in-line rights, and there should be units available, but that's why we built in, it was under my suggestion, that the last, you know, double backup is a year's worth of rent, with the idea being if you're paying $1,600 now and you go rent somewhere, that's $2,200. You're only paying $600 a month for a year, and that should extrapolate you into some more time to be able to continue finding housing, should there be a problem with that. The other thing is, yeah, I, I understand what, what Sabrina said about blackmail. I don't like having to make this decision under the context of litigation, but it's reality, and it's reality because there's real issues with how the city handled this before. Whether those make us liable or not is a very difficult question. I'm an attorney, and I can tell you, there's strong arguments on both sides, which usually means not litigating is a good idea for both sides. But that's not the only pressure that's on us. There's a whole nother side saying, "If you approve this, we're gonna sue you for sequo. Now, that may or may not be true." But then there's a whole nother side that nobody mentioned, that's already been threatened by our own community group spokesman, Tom Francis, talking about Mindful Citizen and Simply Ojai, saying, "We're gonna do a referendum if you pass this." In fact, the warning before was, "I just want to warn you now, if you guys pass this, we're going to a referendum." Well, what does that mean? They collect enough signatures, this comes back to the council anyway. If they get it approved and they get enough signatures, then it won't be in time where Bill and I are still here, and the new council will be set. That new council, if the signatures qualify, will have to make a decision. They will either adopt whatever the people that passed the referendum are, which undoubtedly would be not approving the development agreement. And if the council decides, "Well, we're gonna kill it, that's it, it's done right there," then there'll be later decisions where we'd go back to our last meeting about maybe the cottages, and that council would have to decide what to do, and then that's where litigation may or may not ensue. The council at that point, when it comes back, decides, "You know what? We're not sure," then they can put it to a public vote. Now, that's another option. Now, that public vote will last a number of months, it will go on and on, everybody will be going through this forever. And in that period of time, the developers not gonna be able to operate under the, the development agreement, it won't be approved. But I don't know how those rights with the tenants are going to be impacted. And this could drag on and on and on. So, there, there's pressure on both sides. It's not, and by the way, though, if that happens, it costs our community money as well. It has an impact on how the council will move forward. But it's important for everybody to understand that that is a, a real threat that's been made at that podium to us previously. The issues about compassion and things like that, it's really hard. I mean, I, I, I want to do what's right for the tenants and what's right for Ojai. It's hard because the compassionate answer is, if they could just stay there and nothing could happen and there were no ramifications, I understand that's the most compassionate answer, but that's not reality. I also understand that having anybody displaced from their home and having to move is not compassionate in its own way. So, we're trying to balance all that with as much of a relocation plan and opportunity to find housing as we can. In that context, and what could happen, and what the developers could do, it does seem like the more compassionate answer is certainty. And certainty in this is at least the relocation plan and new affordable housing that could be able to be available. We did, there was one woman who spoke and said, "You know, is this significantly better than what you had in the comments that were made in July? Do you feel like those changes were made?" Yes, I do feel like that. There were a lot of things we discussed, and knowing what the water usage is compared to the previous water usage that was there, I do believe the project's gonna be net zero. And I, I also understand that that may be implemented from Casitas' angle, not necessarily from us, but I do hope that the developers are gonna do that. But I do believe their baseline water usage will be reduced, which would make it net zero under the way that policy is generally written. And, gosh, last, you know, people who say we shouldn't vote on this now, I, I understand that. I have some different feelings about it, but it didn't get past me that those are the same people who I have seen say, "Why didn't we get Merrick Garland onto the Supreme Court when we wanted to? How could they have denied the vote on that? They were still in office, you know? It's the last year of a presidential election, why you can't do that?" Republicans stifled that, and look what we got. I don't think it was a better decision. I think it was a, a life change, you know, a really American-changing manipulation of how the system works. So, we're sitting here, we've put in all the work. I'm not promising that we're gonna even vote on it tonight. I, I still don't know what I'm gonna do either, Susan. But I do want to say that it's, it's not our fault it took this long, but I do think it's important that we, if we are gonna make a decision, I hope we do tonight.
Thank you, Ryan. And I would just like to say a big thank you to the ad hoc committee for all the work you've done in the last couple of years. Thank you to staff for all the work that you've done in the last few years. Thank you to the developers for all the work that you've done in the last few years. Clearly, this has been a really complicated and complex issue. And I agree with you, Ryan, there's pressure on both sides. You know, we could have lawsuits on both sides. One piece of information I think is really important for all of us to remember is that the two permits on Mallory Way and the cottages have expired. So, that's something we really need to keep in, in mind. I have three big issues with this at this point, and then the same ones that I've, I've mentioned before. Number one, and the most important, is that we will be displacing people. And I don't see how displacing people in the cottages is good for Ojai. These are some of our most vulnerable members of our community, and we need to take care of them. And there's a net loss of five units of affordable, I mean, very low income. And that's just, I don't, that's against our ordinance, as Randy said. The second issue I have this, with this, is that considering the, the current circumstances in Ojai and the issues, you know, such a lack of affordable housing, I question whether we need 40 market rate units at this point with no limits on rents. These will not help regular families who would be potentially sending their kids to the public schools. These will be for wealthy individuals and families. The 20 moderate-income units, the allowable rents are $3,463 for a household of four, and that is still not within the reach of, of many families within our community. This is not workforce, workforce housing at all. There's only one unit for very low income, so this will not cut down on traffic. You know, and of course, we have the state mandated ADU, ADUs here that are, that are not rent stabilized, that cannot be rent stabilized. So, they are all market rate, and we will continue to add to our ADU stock, and so that will be, continue to get more and more market rate units. And so, and then the third issue I have with this is, of course, climate and water, which is, you know, our most important issue at this point. And we really need a study of climate-driven aridification that is human caused. Ventura County has gone up 4.7 degrees. It's the fastest heating county in the continental U.S. And we need a study, a scientific study. We need to lean into science, and, you know, science helps us make decisions that we will not later regret. So, I really feel that it's important at this point. You know, this is a crucial time. The whole West is in a huge drought, huge. And so, to say yes to something like this without having consulted science is, I think, just a, a big faux pas at this point in the history of our planet, really. So, in terms of the water, the air, the traffic, that all needs to be considered. So, those are the three main reasons why I think we should say no at this point. Randy?
Mayor, I want to, I want to ride with you on this, on your journey. I want to go with you. So, tell me how you're gonna stop the evictions.
You know, I can, I-
Because I want to go with you. I, I seriously, I want to ride your journey, but I don't know, you, you're not giving me solutions. You're giving me, you're just telling me what you can't do. I, give me, give me, how are we gonna overcome that?
I don't have that right answer right this second, Randy. I do know some lawyers whom we can consult and get some information about that, so.
Okay. All right. So, I, I, like you said, I'm just, I, I want, I want us all up here to be a part of this solution. You know, we're all spilling our guts and we're all talking about cause and effect. And I, just, like you said, I want to go with you. I want to go with Susan. I want to figure out how I can ride the same bus that you're on and, and get to the same place you're going to. But I can't go there unless I hear how I'm gonna get there. And, and that's my only concern on, on some of the comments, but, you know, I wanted to talk about the, and, and again, I'm not saying that to hurt you or harm you or anything like that. I'm just saying, I truly feel that. I'd like to, send them to me. Give me your, your solutions to eviction because I was quoted here. I was, you know, someone's made a, a direct comment that I said something about evictions, and I was looking for the best possible way to not evict these people, and this seemed to be the best possible way. If we go the other way, they're getting evicted. And they're not gonna get any form of, of compensation, they're not gonna get any form of compassion, they're just gonna get kicked to the side of the road, and that's the way life is sometimes. But I don't want that, and, and I think that we can do something. And, and like I said, this is, to me, it's all hands on deck. We've got a 10-year period that we're looking to give them the ability to develop privately their sites. And, and I'm saying that if there's any council, this one or the next one or the one after that that's worth their salt, is gonna figure out how to, how to get low and very low housing built in this community. And we're not gonna get it built through the private sector, and we have got to figure this out. And so that, again, we can all get on this choo-choo, and we can all ride this train together, but we gotta present ideas and we gotta present ways and, and, and right now, this fits a way to get housing. You know, when we say affordable housing, I'm looking at my son. I'm looking at anyone in this community that doesn't own a home, and that's half of it, needs a place to live. And damn it, we need to figure out how to give them a place to live responsibly and, and in a manner that, that we come together on and not divide ourselves on. And, and this is just one little moment in that. And, and we can't stop moving forward based on all this, this stuff I keep hearing. 2016, we got ran out of this council because we wanted to do an affordable housing complex behind us, and it was in the city's overlay, and we ended up having this argument in Bruja, and nothing got built. Nothing. We could've had 40 units if we could've figured how, okay, maybe not here, but where? And you know what? We got lost in, we couldn't figure out how to get where together. We got caught up in not here, and that's not my way. And we gotta figure out, guys, how this community can move forward together and solve these problems together. And like I said, this is a private development, and this guy is giving us, this, these, this group is giving us a 40% return? When the, the, when the inventor accounting, you're lucky if you get 10? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just, this is just one part of moving us forward and creating an environment that all of us can be a part of, so.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate that. And just in response, I think it's really important to remember that there, this, there are 67 units. There's one for very low-income people. You know, those are the people in our community who need the help. There's one unit for very low income.
I made that clear.
And so, I just think that, that's all, something we really need to be aware of. And if you want to help people who really need help, that has to be the intention.
And I don't disagree. I told you, it's all hands on deck. I agree with you 100% with that statement. 100%. And we have to figure out how to do that. But this, this gives some affordability to some people.
Well, I would say this does not figure out how to help people who really need help. This makes a lot of money.
One aspect of it, Mayor, I'm sorry.
There's, there's one unit. Ryan?
I, I mean, this, it's, I, I agree. This does not help all the people who need it. But doing nothing is a lot worse. That's not helping anybody. And we gotta start somewhere. This is not the end-all-be-all of affordable housing in Ojai. This is the tiny little, maybe break-the-ice moment where maybe we've changed. I know since this project, and I, I don't know if, I may, I had to review this project for my father while he was on the council, the Mallory Way project. And at that point, the council was upset because they wanted a density bonus by putting in affordable housing, and they didn't want more density on the project. And it was a very contentious debate. But things have changed. Affordable housing has changed. And I know, I mean, I've heard too, you know, we're not getting as many legal units. We, we saw some simple math. We have gotten more units than it's arguable or disputed that they would need to replace, and it's way more than they'd have to do under a project based on percentages. So, it's, this isn't the answer to everything. I wish I could be here and figure out how we're gonna do very low, how we're gonna find some property for other places. But every time we do this, let's be honest, the, the arguments from a lot of the people that don't support this is, "You're building out all of Ojai, we can't keep building out, building more isn't it." The, you know, supply has never fixed the housing demand issue. It's, it doesn't, it's completely hypocritical. And the idea that this doesn't help enough people, well, it helps somebody, and it's better than what we got. I agree with you. I hope this is a step in the right direction and not the end of the journey, but, you know, we, we can't, we can't privately develop a project that fixes all the problems in housing in Ojai. We just can't. And we're lucky we were getting anything out of this after the way it was gonna go down. So, anyway, I, I just want to reiterate that. Like, yes, I think we all agree, this is only a small part in the overall solution, so I completely concur with you, Mayor, but I, I think that we gotta start somewhere.
May I ask something?
Susan?
Ryan, I heard you say that, something about $2,200 rent. Remember that point? And I just want to point out, that doesn't exist. It's $3,000, $4,000.
No, the, the low, well, there's different limits in our packet than we're on the slides, than we're on something else. But the moderate income is, depending on which one of these is correct, for a single person, well, this says 2,424 for moderate for a single person.
Yes, yeah, I understand that. But I think you thought that if the tenant got a payment equal to 12 months' rent, that that would help them.
Yeah, they, if, well, I, if a tenant has to leave and they, they, if, if there's no other units available, because we're trying to make it work to pretty much making sure that everybody was gonna have at least a year of the same rent, and either the same, either affordable unit, that was similar, or what they qualified for, I should say, maybe not the same rent, but what they qualified for. Or if there wasn't one at that affordability level, they'd still only have to pay what they could qualify for, you know, that lower level. Then if there's nothing else available, whatever their current rent is, they would get a whole year of that. Now, the other one is only the difference between those two. They'd still be paying the same base rent. But if, let's say somebody's paying $1,600, is what I use. Then if they were to go out and pay $3,000, they're only paying $1,400 a month for those, for that year, because it's the difference between the 16 and the 3,000.
Is that, is that correct, city attorney? And, and perhaps the developer would like to weigh in?
Yeah.
If they, if the person finds a house for $3,000, Mr. Becker will pay the difference?
No, he'll, he would, he would pay the, the old rent. So, whatever the old rent was for one year. So, if they're paying $1,600 a month now, and there's no unit available, and then they are forced to move out of that facility, out of the project, then they would get $1,600 times 12 months that they can put towards the future rent.
Well, you know, the other really, really horrific aspect of this is the moment in time when this is before us. It couldn't be worse. Well, it probably will get worse. It's at a moment when people, if you see a rental, I wonder how many people applied for, for the unit you had on Zillow for 1,850. I saw that, and I thought, oh, my gosh, what if that's in the 4th District, you know? And, of course, it wasn't. But how many people applied? That's so unusual. That's so incredible. If you see that, it's not in Ojai. It's in Myers Oaks, or there's something odd, because the normal rent for even a small house, who said it, one bedroom, is 3,400. So, that's the moment, and that's the context that we're looking at this. This is the moment. If there were, you know, this wouldn't be such a, I wouldn't be so tortured about this if I knew that the people, if they were displaced, if I knew, had confidence that they could find something affordable. But I don't have that confidence. Bill?
Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you. Well, thanks for recognizing, but I'm gonna say how I don't agree with you. I don't think it's compassionate to use a goal that's only achievable, which you stated is a goal in terms of the very low and low. It's not compassionate to use a goal that's only achievable by another method, by public housing or by philanthropic housing, to say no to a development agreement that exposes the existing tenants like a no would, and removes the level of protection that this development agreement provides. It's the mechanism for that protection. And so, to use an argument about something that can't be achieved by private development as a reason to remove that protection by saying no is just something I just can't agree with. And so, like I said, I, I think my position, you know, is clear, and I'm just amplifying my rationale. But I would hope that we're gonna, we're getting close to something where we, we make a decision that, you know, we get to a, get to a motion with conditions and-
Do you have a, do you have a, do you have a motion, Bill?
What's happening?
I will make a motion then on something I've been invited to, and we'll see where we go with it. I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendations as listed on Page 1 and 2. Mr. Summers, can I just go through the, did I just reference them by number?
Yeah, that's fine. The only correction is, of course, the ordinance is to be introduced, not adopted tonight. And everything else is there.
Right, it's only introduced. So, the recommendations that are, with the additional stipulation of the city hiring a consulting arborist of the name of, namely, Mr. John Scow, that would be at city expense. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I would like to make a substitute motion to deny the agreement.
Can I also make a substitute motion?
We, so, three motions at a time. We have one motion on the table made, seconded. Substitute motion by the mayor needs a second. If no second is dead, then your motion can be made. But first, is there a second to the mayor's substitute motion?
Yes.
And what was the mayor's motion?
To deny.
Everything.
Yep. Okay. And you second that, Susan?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
So, we'll have a roll call on the first motion, the second motion first.
There may be further council debate, of course. If not, then it's appropriate for a roll call on the substitute motion first.
So, would you consider, rather than denying, because there's so much information, and I would like to, I really, in an ideal world, I would have another opportunity to consult with a housing expert, you know, because we're really, there's so much legal stuff going on. I don't, I would like a 30-day opportunity to do that, rather than outright denial. But-
You'd like a, what did you say?
A thir- Because, to find a path forward.
Sure.
Because how can we deny without having a path forward? I haven't heard, it's very hard, because you have to present, I mean, I seconded your motion for purpose of discussion, but where's the path forward?
Well, the path forward is that we go back and start over, really, because, you know, keep in mind that this is a 10-year development plan. It will lock us in for 10 years. And in terms of real time, you know, the environmental, financial, regulatory circumstances will change in the next 10 years. You know, in five years, there could be very different laws passed in California related to housing. So, you know, I don't think that's a good, could we please have quiet so we can hear up here? Thank you. So...
So, I heard our city attorneys say that if laws are passed by the state and they're stronger, that it would override this development agreement?
My comment was as to tenant protections, not all laws.
Okay.
If tenant protections existed or stronger per state law for existing tenants than are in the DA, the stronger state protections will control. If in the opposite, our DA, if approved, has stronger protections than state law for tenants, those would apply. As to the rest of the law book, that'll depend.
So...
And to be clear, that'll depend on what the law is. It depends on, I can't say definitively all of the rest of the laws will control over the DA, because DAs can be used, DAs can fix certain laws in time against changes, other times, it just depends.
As you speak, I try to think of the consequences of either a yes or a no. There's, you know, the consequences. Either way, there's serious consequences.
Should we vote?
Still second?
I think Ryan's trying to-
Oh, yeah, I don't mind the second.
Okay, you still, so we have two motions and two seconds. Go ahead, Ryan.
Susan, I don't, I mean, I'll just be frank. I don't wanna vote on this without you. I don't want this to be a three-to-two decision jammed in at the end of our terms to do this. I respect you so much, and I know this is difficult. I'm having a hard time, too. I live there, and I, I mean, there's a lot of things that I'm very, very concerned about. But I'm more, I mean, I, I am leaning, I mean, I do wanna see this happen, because I am more concerned about litigation and people being evicted and all that. But I don't like that there's a seeming, feels a little more evenly split. It's been a pretty predominant amount of public input that's been negative, and tonight's changed, looks like that's changed a little bit, which I think is, I think if we're, I think that's a sign of the momentum of people understanding it as well. But this is a big deal, and I don't want it to be split three-to-two. I'm not gonna put all this on you, but I, you know, I, I can understand kicking this to the next council. I can, I mean, the reality is that if the threats that we've heard about a referendum are gonna happen, we vote yes, then it's gonna come back in front of the council anyway. And then, but it's going to have a completely different flavor. It's gonna be definitely different. And it's highly likely that some changes could occur where that gives them the opportunity to kill it. If we kill it now, we'll never know. If we kill it now, I mean, what I'd like to see is if it's going to be that, if that's necessary, because I feel equally that I don't like a lawsuit over my head, and I don't like a referendum over my vote. But if it's going to be a referendum that's gonna come, I hope that the next council would either seriously consider allowing it or put it to a public vote potentially. That's a whole different option. And if we don't say yes tonight, then we take all of that off the table. And, and that's, I, but I wanted, I wanna, frankly, I wanna do this with, I think we know where the mayor sits. I'd prefer to do this as we're doing it on our way out, with four of us, with the understanding being, if there is a referendum, the new council can decide what they wanna do. And I hope that if they, if they decide to kill it, that'll be their right at that time. If they don't, hopefully, a, you know, if it's necessary, a public vote on it. But I, I just really think that that's the better of the options versus having this thing be buried here tonight.
And if I could make another point on that, in terms of maintaining options for the next council, councils could put items on ballot, too, referendum. So, the options, the constructive options set is much larger, whereas the certainty of removing protection on tenants, that they're, that way above state requirements, is only achieved by a yes tonight.
Yeah, that is really the stickler that would tip me to a yes vote. But I wanna have a question about the referendum. If we've, will you clarify, if we decide, and it sounds like the council majority is there with or without me, if we approve this development agreement, if the council majority approves the, the development, I'm gonna cry. I just feel so, Lenny had it right. There's no, what did Lenny say? There's no, but anyway, tell me again, no matter how we vote, if there's a referendum, it goes, I don't wanna push it.
I can explain the referendum process. That might be helpful.
Well, and the consequences of the referendum is that they, if they challenge this, then this is, how we vote, if they disagree with how we vote, this vote doesn't count?
The council would have the power to change it. So, let me explain that. The, tonight, if the council so chose, majority, it would be to vote to introduce the ordinance that approves the development agreement and related approvals. That would return at your next meeting next Tuesday for the second vote, second reading and adoption, again, if majority so chose. If it's adopted, that is, the ordinance that approves the development agreement is adopted, that ordinance is subject to referendum, the right of the people through, by petition, to put the matter on the ballot. The referendum proponents would have to do a petition in compliance with rules regarding formatting and timing, gather enough signatures, file that with the city. The city has, they have about 30 days to gather signatures. Then the city would have about 30 days to review the signatures and count, verify them as enough or not. If all of that was done, and if the referendum petition had sufficient valid signatures and met all of the requirements of law, including as to format, then it would come back to the council. Given that timing, it's likely to be the council seated after the election in November 2022. And the council will have three choices. Number one, rescind the ordinance and thus kill it. Number two, submit it to the voters. Or number three, file a lawsuit to challenge not being forced to do either of those, assuming there was a valid basis, that something had been, had been done procedurally invalid to create a basis for a lawsuit. So, likely, the answer would be, assuming the proponents correctly complied with the procedural requirements, we'd be looking at two choices. Choice one would be for the council to rescind the ordinance and kill it. Choice two, submit it to the voters, who would then have the choice.
You're talking about the new council.
And that would all be the new council, given the timing.
Okay. Then I have, when you're done, I have another question.
That's, that's the referendum process.
Okay. So, the second reading next Tuesday night.
Correct.
Normally, this would simply be on the consent calendar, correct?
I think we have already planned that if it's adopted tonight, it would be on discussion next time, not consent, mindful of the significant public interest.
And refresh me again, if I voted yes, and who is it that can change their vote?
And second reading is a, is a whole new vote. So, anyone can, any member of council can vote any way they wish on second reading.
Okay. Because by the second reading, I will have done more research, and I can change my vote at the second reading.
Absolutely. You have an absolute right to change your vote.
Anybody can change.
Any, anyone in council.
And if the council majority was presented with a path forward, I mean, not the council majority, but if the council-
And historically, this, if I could just jump in there, historically, this council and past councils in Ojai have often seen something on second reading and made adjustments and not, and the votes have shifted. So, yes, it's an absolute right. Tonight's vote does not force you to vote the same way next time.
Okay. So, the second reading next Tuesday.
So, should we proceed with the votes?
We have two motions.
First on the substitute.
Yep. Okay.
I thought we voted on the first one.
We haven't voted on any yet.
Neither has been voted on yet.
So, and you seconded my motion.
Yes.
Okay. Could we, Robin, could we have the roll call?
This is a substitute.
On the substitute motion.
On the substitute motion, okay. Councilmember Wirick?
No.
Mayor Protem Haney?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Okay, Mayor Styx and Council, Mayor Styx?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then, thank you, Robin. We have a second motion.
And this would be the motion to approve the staff, the ad hoc committee's recommendation, introduce the ordinance, and add the requirement for an arborist at the city's expense.
Right.
Can we have a roll call on that, Robin, please?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for everyone for being here, for the community weighing in, staff and council. This meeting's adjourned.